Here this evening, it's.
Minutes from last time. I need to edit it out. Minutes last work session.
Uh, this is a work session.
We have the minutes from my last.
No, not yet.
Go ahead, next week.
Uh, if I can work with my current staff to be able to do that, I'll try.
Hey, well, we'll get started here now as chief, if you'll go ahead with his report, please.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. Few significant calls for service this past month. You can see on July twentieth. We responded to a few things where the road from an attempted suicide. That individual was in the D.C. and transported to the E.R. by the rescue squad. We'll find now. Uh, on July the third. Vehicle stopped for improper registration. One of the officers gained a consent search of the vehicle, found a crystal meth. In the vehicle and also some heroin. And cocaine and stuff that was also in the car. So that individual in there was charged with three felony charges of drug possession. You can see, uh. We've had quite a lengthy, uh. Investigation into these car break-ins. So if you recall, last month I reported out that a number of cars had been broken into down here. About property to boat later. A week later, we responded out to the Scottsdale pool where five cars were broken into. Few days later, we started getting phone calls from the victims, um. That their IDs, checks and stuff had started turning up. All over the Commonwealth. Um, we got hooked in with the Powhatan County Sheriff's Office. And learned that there is a ring of individuals that have come up out of Florida. And have been heading Powhatan. They made the rounds through Scottsville, Albemarle, Fluvana County. And we have executed search warrants. From Orange, Green, Scottville. And Albemarle so far. We've, we've served five or six search warrants so far on banks to try to get. Copies of checks, bank records, pictures, videos of these individuals going through the bank, drop throughs, ring of bank. See if we can identify who's doing it. But we're working with the, uh, other agencies, pulling all of the information together. Uh, also Woods meeting with Detective Richardson from Albemarle, Trulita, Mar. Hopefully be able to get that information, uh, to their analyst, prompt analyst to put us together a, uh, link analysis. And try to link all of these cases together from these different jurisdictions. We just started getting some of the bank returns today. Going through all that data, but it's a pretty significant black collar crime.
Is there anything we should be dying to, maybe from a take up to let people know, I think. You know, don't leave things in your car, the, you know, should we do anything like that?
Well, we have been doing that. These, these individuals, this is a very significant. It's very organized, random people. Both pretty confident that they're driving into these parking lots and they're sitting and watching people. They're trying to stop out. The reason why we've been able to conclude that is one of the. Individuals that had her cargo into. Intentionally took her off the book and belonged valuables out of the driver's department pocket and the trunk. But she did along. The driver's side. So they get in. Pop the trunk, and now they've got everything. Uh, they've. Got a number of cars where the doors haven't been locked. Uh, there are even valuables in 20 side. They're breaking the windows. But we're pretty much believable. They're sitting there watching what's going on and they're targeting. Individuals as they get out, dog parts.
So, so this is a professional group is traveling around the country. There's a whole bunch of them.
No, we've got at least. Photographs of a half a dozen people right now.
Right, that did, they're, they're all the boot.
We have a question. No, no, uh, community engagements. You can see we had our pastors council meeting on the twentieth. Javier and I will be meeting with them again this month. Uh, we partnered with the ACPD. Scottsville Fire Department Conservation Police and the Boys and Girls. And had a public safety day on August fourth. Great turnout. And we probably had a hundred and fifty kids. Parents, folks there replaced the pickball with kids and have refreshments and stuff with them. So it was a great time. They really enjoyed it. Our auxiliary officers, uh, had dominated sixty-seven hours of their time this past month. A lot of that was I T work by, by officer ball. Uh, department news, you can see that. Uh, just put this back on there. I just wanted counsel to know that we have gotten all of our body armor. That we have ordered and all of the, the paperwork has been submitted to P C G S for reimbursement. So I spit down and be getting reimbursement for that expense, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. Uh, yesterday I set and did the five ninety-nine grant funds. Have just been released. Uh, so we did that. Hopefully we'll get somewhere in the neighborhood of about sixteen thousand dollars of approved. Out of that grant. Uh, one of the things that I'd like to talk with the council about, if you don't mind, is the, uh. So last year we had, uh, uh, vehicle maintenance on that car that officer good drives and it was fifty-six hundred dollars. Sixty-one, fifty-six, sixty-one for vehicle maintenance. And it was completed, I think sometime in May, right Javier?
I think so, right.
And Javier and I had a lot of discussion on when to pay, how to pay and that kind of stuff. And you know how the town's. Budget is towards the end of the year. Well, what we found was is we waited, um. Looks like we had an access of about eighty-six hundred dollars in the police department's budget from last year.
Yeah.
And what I would ask counsel to consider for me is could we have counsel reappropriate the fifty-six, sixty-one from last year's. Budget from the police department back into the current. Budget so we can pay that expense. So we're not going into the new year in a deficit already of vehicle maintenance. So I wanted to throw that out there for council's consideration. I know it would certainly help us, uh, if we reappropriated. I'm not sure what the process is for, but. If you're wanting to make sure that pass. You all would consider that.
Chief, thank you. Javier, let me ask you. What would that do? Budget wise, as we. Apply that to this year.
So our. This year's budget would look a little bit larger. But we, we played a pretty conservative with the police budget. And that's how we had that eight thousand. I thought we were going to come right at the line. And that's why we expected, we said wait. But that June financial statement came back and that's what you noticed and I noticed that we added a difference of eight thousand. Um, that would help with an unexpected, uh. Vehicle issue. So. That's much larger than we usually expect for the maintenance. Uh, throughout the year, the regular stuff lights, you know, something quick that needs to get changed, windshield wiper, something like that.
So what you're, so what you're saying is if we did the fifty-six move it forward. That's okay in terms of the overall twenty twenty.
It's, I'm always more worried about our cash flow than about. The budget in some, and then the total number. So the timing is better now and it's slower in the year for us. Um, it would just have to, we would have to formalize it and then I would make sure that that is shared. With you, uh, and then also with our auditors. Cause you remember last year. Uh, we, we wanted to make sure our auditors were getting all their figures correctly. That was part of the report back to you guys.
So it doesn't come out of reserve or anything, which is.
We would have to. We'd still reappropriate, so. I have to look again to make sure.
So this eighty-six eighteen. That we were in the black for the, for the police department budget. Where did that? Go back into the reserves?
That would.
It's the general fund.
Yeah.
In the general.
It's, it's unexpended, so.
So it goes back.
Beginning of the fiscal year, it just shows up the general fund and then you go back to the police budget. And as the chief says. He, he wants, he needs the fifty-six, whatever it is. And so you have to reappropriate it. So everyone, everything's all the up and up.
So you would just see it in the general fund as eight thousand. We, yes, because we expected eight thousand less than the general fund. Uh, and we didn't know that until I did my financial statement at the end of the year. He played it pretty safe, but. We did pretty.
I, I just know our cars I need to purchase for. This truck that's out here. Um, and I've been waiting and holding off to get it. And I know that spare is. I don't, we shouldn't be getting our new car in here. Third week of this month. And I'm, I know they've got. Born down and they're rebuilding it to follow the police department now. Just got a call while I was away last week from the builder who's doing that. So they're putting it all back together. We get it built back together. They programmed all of the radios. So that's all ready to go in the new car. So work case scenario, we'll get the car third, fourth week of August. Uh, have to take it to Green County, get it marked up. And then once we get it marked up, Javier and I will talk in. Or we'll get a hold of the USDA folks and we'll have them come down, give their inspection. Finish up their paperwork and hopefully give us reimbursement for the purchase of the car.
So remember that Becky and I. Reported this to you also. This is going to end up being a catch-up year for us. We expected that much earlier, but all grants have taken longer than expected USDA. We even had to drive pretty safe down to get the car at first. And that was a real trip for you guys. Um, so. You'll see that in our. Budget as we work through and we're working through brands. So once you have all that set, I'll. Take a call, I'll work on getting it back from USDA and. We'll meet with them. Uh, that should be interesting. I missed out on it last year. So I'll be more involved this year. See you guys.
So it sounds like a good thing to do. I think it just makes sense that. Next week.
Okay, that's clear direction for staff.
Yes. Any other questions for the chief? Thank you. Appreciate your, all your hard work and your staff too.
Yes, sir.
Chamber of Commerce report is kind of short, uh. Two things. Last Thursday, we had a joint, uh, meeting with Fluvana and, uh, over at Hardware Hills. So everybody get to know one another. And the main thrust right now is working on the Holiday Happenings event, which is tentatively scheduled for the first Saturday in December. We have the, uh. All kinds of stuff going on, including lighting of the Christmas tree and of the arrival of Santa Claus.
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt you for one second? This is just a question for chief. Just occurred to me. I should have asked this. This is just a follow-up on. The crime that happened. And this is, this happens sporadically, as you know, that we get something that comes from somewhere else. I guess my question is, in your efforts to. Educate the little ones, which is wonderful. If, perhaps sometime in the future, there's some type of, I don't know what programs there are, but that would. Help wake us up to be paying attention also, because there are things that. Every, I remember some years ago when my wife had to serve on jury duty and she was shocked by the crimes that's around. Sometimes we forget. And it's, it's there all the time and maybe just some level of awareness in a way that's. Even more adult oriented, so to speak, if that makes sense, because. Yeah, it, well, in a way I, I know you do it in it, but it's sometimes we forget things like that, that you just tend to think it's local and there's. There's all kinds of stuff that comes through here, as you know, all the time, and we just don't tend to do that. So a little bit of an education to kind of remind people that. There are scary things in this world you need to pay attention to. And, and to, and to be, uh, you know, a community that's watching and helping each other in the midst of. Of things that happen, because sometimes you might not be thinking and you're observing a crime. And it's helpful to give you a call and say something doesn't look right over there. And, and you know, to remind our community to be attentive to being. Communicating with you in unusual situations.
Try to push all the information out on our Facebook page as much as I can to keep the community and those that follow the police department informed of what's going on. So, you know, I don't know if the, the news media. Wants this type of thing.
Well, maybe us, and maybe it's just us thinking more creative ways, or even when we have the, the website up, there's, there might be interesting ways or. We have other media sources in the audience that could do things also that are here that. Just continuing to make people aware, to pay attention and to give you a call if there's a need.
Newspapers, we used to run local crime all the time.
Yeah.
One page stop.
Yeah.
Of course, there are not any newspapers anymore, so that's all gone.
Social medias.
They don't run every day anymore.
Yeah, they don't.
A lot of people still use social media.
It, it's amazing. I'm not kidding. So our little police department's webpage started with fifty-two followers. When I took over. Today it's nine hundred. So we've. Kind of been putting Miracle Row on it, fertilizing it, and it's growing. Like, I think the town has, what, sixteen hundred?
I think you're a better social media manager than me. I don't remember off the top of my head.
I wonder, it has like fifteen thousand people. France, Asia, whatever it is, that's like fifteen thousand people.
Okay, any other questions? Uh. Mr. Basset, anything from A R B?
There is, um, pretty straightforward meeting. We had two properties that got poor ratings. Over the last inspection period, uh, the homeowner has done. He questioned, uh, issues with the houses and. Those properties will likely at the next meeting be moved up to fair or great condition. Other than that, an issue did come up about the fencing around Tiger Fuel property. And it's not. Within our sign ordinance. So. We talked to A R B and kind of came to the conclusion that. It's for A R B to recommend, you know, an S U P, but for council to enforce it and looking at some of the. Uh, signage laws that we have in place here. I don't know if that's true and it might be on A R B. So if anyone has an opinion on that, or if it's something we think is even worth pursuing, it's a temporary fence, but it is against our due.
Yeah, uh, just like the, uh, campaign signs across from the Dollar General on the corner, they're all violation of the ordinance too. Best case. The sign that tiger on the fence will probably, hopefully, since they put a wall up today. Will be gone in a couple of months.
Mm-hmm. That was my thinking as well. I just couldn't know my first. First go around with that. So I wanted to bounce it off of council and see what you guys wanted to do.
But they don't allow, you know, Charleston. I, I just, I think we're a historic town. I think it's a maybe to take them down. I'm more high line like that. You know, it's, they're, they've got free advertising and they're huge and ugly. And I just think that the fence is fine, maybe a screen. But I think they need a, they need a line on that.
If they sign on the fence.
Yeah, it's, uh, the company's logo as well as Tiger, the building company as well as Tigers. I can open a conversation with them through A R B or I can do it. Through, you know, council or you can, uh, oh. You know, I'm not.
I think it, right now, I think it would probably be, uh. The best if the A R B kind of handled it and then made any recommendations to the council. Uh, well, they, I think they have mentioned anywhere between the end of November and the first. Middle of January.
Okay. So you can loop your zoning administrator.
January is more likely date. November was kind of like a wish and. Right. They told me on Fourth of July that it would be in January.
Yeah, it's January.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll see.
They got the same stuff up in Charlesville, so.
Any other A R B stuff?
What about the, you mentioned about the looking signs. How are we going to handle that?
Well, I've asked Cody to pick them up at his convenience and store them here. We're not going to throw them away, of course, but if anybody finds their sign missing, it'll be stored here at the town hall and they're welcome to retrieve it.
That's much more clear in our zoning.
Yeah, that's.
Dude, there's a tree service fountain in Scott.
Yeah, that one needs to go too.
Eleven street, nothing.
And, you know. No, Danny's not our good friends. But he's got sheds, let's say, about five signs or whatever. And he's got the sheds there and. I think you're like, I just want to say, please, you guys fall in the ball there. I, I hate to even approach him about it, but if you. Do one, you gotta do it.
Yeah, I think that's. Why I'm approaching this cautiously. It's people doing business in the town. I get it and I don't want to be a thorn in the side of people trying to make money and that will. Actually make money off of as well, but. We got, you know, the ordinance is the ordinance. So is council that should I pursue through A R B and at least start a conversation?
Two, two ways to look at it too. The one with the, uh, that you're talking about that, uh. If I could get out of the car, I would have moved it already, but, um. That's advertising a business, whereas the other are political signs related to just one event. Um, which. You know, political signs are fine, but they're, they're focused on one event where the other guy is trying to make a living. Yeah, so. Look at them both ways.
I can double check our sign ordinance again, because I know there's distinctions between business done on the premise and business. Not related to the premise. So you're power washing unless you're actually power washing on there.
Also, ones on the edge of the street are on V dot right away. And technically, unless you have V dot's permission to put them out, they're illegal.
Meredith, and I think you had some to say as well.
Well, this was going back to, um, Tiger Fuel, an old issue that I don't think was ever resolved. And I kind of forgot about it until just now. Did we ever get? The new signage that they were going to do? I think when Zach left, it was kind of in the middle of all of that. Um. Cause none of their signs that they proposed were within.
I've heard about this recently. I don't remember where. Might have been at A R B. I have a great memory. Um. I think Tiger Fuel was essentially like, we don't want to change our sign. And the end of the conversation was we're going to get a variance. Well, that has to come through A R B or, uh, or council. So it's not resolved.
Cause the drawing they presented, the sign, and if you look at the side of Mill Creek, the drawing they presented, the dimensions were larger than the side at Mill Creek.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. So. It'll come back up for, if you want me to add that onto the list of things.
I'm just curious to see, yeah, see where they're at with that. I wasn't sure if they were hoping. We kind of forgot about it in the, in the changeover, you know.
Really haven't made.
That's a more serious issue.
Yeah.
Haven't made any decisions on a sign yet. So they need to understand.
You better all be ahead of that one.
Yeah, yeah. So maybe, yeah.
Then I, if I can jump on the events.
Yes, sir.
Just say that about the, this political side. I think the Elmore has it. You could have a political sign, but it's, I think it's thirty days.
Well, our ordinance says thirty days before the event and two weeks after, you know, just come now.
There is some time.
So, yeah.
We would encourage that.
A little bit further out, thirty days.
So I'm trying to do this fundraiser again in October. I think it's mid-October. The weather should be a lot nicer for an outdoor event. I want to do it in the Canal Basin Square again. We've already done the renovation on that, so it seems a little funny to have another fundraiser for it. Is there any thing you guys like, any projects you want fundraisers for, any specific things? Cause I think just. Raising money for generally for the town is not going to be looked at like it's not just not having a good look to it.
You know, it's that canal basis square. That, there's a lot of, of issues with that, with that, you know, that whole platform there. You need to replace those plastic. And there's the sign there that needs to be, you know.
Yeah.
And then the barrels, all the barrels are, you know, I turned them the other day because they were, so you couldn't see the, the bottom zone were all worked. Out of that. So I think.
We can do it again.
Basically the barrels, the sign and the, uh, the, uh, whatever that stages they have there, I can't even see it.
And the barrels I looked into were like a hundred and eighty bucks.
Yeah.
But they're not the same dimension as the original ones, so.
Cause it's a, it's a tourist attractive. But it's beautiful. It's beautiful.
I would love those plexiglass.
To be clear.
The posters, like a nicer. Like it's really kind of flimsy, like a nice poster with a nice frame that. You know, newer.
Yeah.
I, I think doing another Canal Basin fundraiser, I mean, there's still a lot of.
Be out of line because it's a continuing. It's like your house. You got a painting that once in a while you got to keep.
The water fountain, never, two years and. Okay, we need to see if we can fix that. You know, it's hot out there.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, anything else on events or A R B?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Um, I went to the, Dan was stuck in Philadelphia last week, so I went to the planning commission. Meeting as an observer for him and, uh, it was a really good meeting. The whole thing focused basically on the cop plan. Um, Lincoln gave a really good presentation and this was his presentation. This is your copy. Um, if you haven't got a copy of this, uh, Javier will fix you up with a copy so you can read it. This is, uh, got a lot of good facts and figures and we're heading in the right direction with the completion of the cop plans. So that is what you missed out on last week.
Javier, do you forward that to all of us?
Yeah, I'll share it after.
The meeting. It was a really long meeting.
Cause I don't know if any of you guys know, is there, is there anything about, cause I did the last part, about the last one. Is there anything at all in the content about tourist lodging? This has taken off the last five years and. I don't think it was even roached in the cop plan five years ago. I think that would be good. So we're going to be dealing with that. We are dealing with it.
I did.
Okay, I can see that.
Here's.
In the survey.
Just happened to turn this page.
Right, I mean, okay.
Twenty twenty-three strategic plan analyzing objectives, short-term launching secures. When you get your copy of this, you'll, it, you'll probably may hopefully answer your questions.
I know I put it on.
Good. Okay. So that's about all I can report on planning commission. It was a very. It's good meeting. Um. Treasurers report.
Um, so this will, I will work on our financial statement. For July. Um, that will be our first month in our new fiscal year. So I'll present that next week with some notes and we'll see how we are sitting for. Uh, the beginning of twenty twenty-three, if it's twenty twenty-four. Um, beyond that, I think I have some more relevant. Um, treasures discussions. We previously talked about, uh, Chief Jenkins. We talked about police department's budget. Um, I have a report back on, uh, for new topics on the discussion down in the agenda about, um. Our budget scope for our comprehensive plan. It is moving faster than I expected. And moving well and progressing, but I can get into more details. Um, beyond that, I think I touched upon it a little bit. Uh, this summer is a lot of grant work as I. Lead into, um. Trying to also hire and get past our busy period, which is Fourth of July. So I can give a staff a financial statement, uh, next week that will give us a good update and then we'll continue from there. Um, beyond that, I am chasing down a.
Did you get the phone call?
No. Um, so I've, I've talked with, uh, previous town administrator and with the mayor before. Um, we have a large delinquent, uh, business license. Uh, I have been relatively aggressive, but I haven't hit the most. Uh I have been relatively aggressive, but I haven't hit the most. Serious enforcement that we can do. Um I've been communicating and with them every year, every other day recently. I don't wanna get into the. I would think it's appropriate not to get into the details just yet, but it's enough that it is. Valuable enough for me for cash flow and just for being fair to all businesses. To see what enforcement I can do. Uh I'm waiting on a final call for a check number, which is a little bit frustrating. But I'm running out of options. I've communicated with uh local and then with uh. Higher up the chain also about.
How delinquent?
Uh.
How delinquent?
Uh it was, they are not licensed to run a business since March.
We'll get, do you have, do you have their bank account or their check, any checks from?
Uh I have some old checks.
Oh, you see their bank account. You want to, they'll get their attention.
So part of my question is, how much attention does council want? I can continue this route. Um I was waiting on another phone call, I was clear to them that I wanted to report out to town council. Uh this is the biggest fish for us and I wanna be clear that I was told. This is one of the important aspects of my work here.
Well, then why don't you just write them a letter and say that your patience has run out and if you're gonna start enforcement action.
I've.
Including court action and and any, any, any ability, I think, and all remedies available to you as a taxman, which is a bunch.
First one has been vocalized, the second one I can vocalize.
Well, no, you just put it right.
Put it right.
Yeah, I already did, so.
Well, no, you send it to them.
Yeah. Now, I can send. I've had an email back that I can send something.
Yes.
All right.
And then if they are, you just do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, it's been a long.
March, it's too long.
We used to have. Issues some years ago and it wasn't uncommon where we had to talk through how to do it. If we're to this level. It's unfortunate, but it's not uncommon that we have to move. In a more direct way and to try to do what you can do to end it. You know, meaning get it so the money comes in.
Yes.
I like the seizing the bank account.
Well, you can actually put it on there and seize the tools if you want to. Don't mess with the taxman.
Yeah, no, how how do you want me to approach it? Okay. There's an aspect to we.
I mean, it's ridiculous, but I think.
That's possibility. Um previous two town administrators have been kind of leftover. I just want to also tell you that because you will get questions if, as we proceed. With this. Um beyond that, I have a, I've been corresponding, we have a hotel study that I've been trying to track down some history on. Um the product that's coming back, I'm not super happy with. So I'm gonna see if I can have a discussion with him later about it. I'll fill you in Jim a little bit about that. Uh we got a grant through. Albemarle County, um and we've paid half of it. Uh we have the next reimbursement coming soon, but it's. Not the caliber of work I would want, even if it wasn't uh a pastor grant in some respect. So you'll probably hear a little bit about that through email, uh but.
Where does this fall?
Yeah. Hospitality study we did down here, uh regional tours for it came down. Uh specialist, um it was from last year.
I remember that.
We've mentioned it before.
Right, I don't know what's uh, I mean, hotels and.
It's a hotel study, essentially.
Using.
Could we get a hotel down here?
We, we did something like that five or six years ago that. Looked at boutique hotels and tried to, I I don't, there must be some, you might look back and see. That in our documents.
They did one for Croze too, probably had.
Okay.
The county did.
All right.
You can look at that, that's what, what kind of quality that was.
I'll look at that, there's enough reading through it with the help of Lincoln that there is some questions about quality on it. Uh we are in a contract, so I'm just giving you a heads up, but I think it'd be a good. I think I'm being a good advocate for the town, uh being a little bit. On it.
Questions on quality of the report?
Yeah, I don't, it's not great. Um it's, I wanna have a discussion about uh aspects of it.
Could you forward us the report?
Yeah.
And what happens if they don't turn that report around?
That's a. I'm trying to figure that out, I'm going through uh.
That contract ball?
Yeah, so that's the one thing I'm gonna discuss with Jim a little bit about now.
And then what happens to the grant from contract involved? Do you have any sense, I mean?
Uh started digging through it last week, cause I wasn't uh working on the grant and I'm trying to find some details on it, but I'm having a little bit of trouble.
Who gave you the grant?
Uh. Albemarle.
Well, then call them up and ask them.
So I'm gonna call them up. But for treasure response to uh next week, we'll have a financial statement, but we'll try to stay with the same pattern as best as possible.
Any other questions for treasures?
Which? The. Staff time, definitely, yeah. And then uh we, we have about, from what I can tell, it's about a thousand, we pay for the majority's grant through that. But I still think you should.
We were paying a thousand.
Yeah.
And that was something that we talked about last year.
Yes.
Yeah, that uh hotel study for the year, so that back was about thirteen years.
And that's, it's about ten years ago, you're right, you probably better remember than I do, maybe. If I had a way to how long, I know it's, it's got some time to it, but it's still the same concept.
Hmm.
Post, Coze was scratching around for the hotel instead of like. Launch this study, it would at least give you some kind of benchmark, I don't know.
That was the situation where uh Admiral Kennedy decided they were making. Tourist zone.
Yeah.
And uh just to give this one fish in burrow.
That's right.
And uh after that, they had tourist zone set. So and by the way, these are the way.
And they didn't, they did not get the boutique hotel either.
Hey, any other questions? A year's report is simple, I have uh. Been spending a number of hours up here uh trying to help Javier as much as I could with the questions he might have. Had, might have about. Past things that the council has done and past things that have gone on and it's just been sort of a, try to, try to help him get the. Get the one as best he can, so. That's all, all my, my report. Mr. Bowling, you have something for us?
Uh just, just a few things, I learned more about park models than I ever did before, you used to know. And I think, I think I, I told you in an email, I think Eddie's definition will work. If that's what council wants to do and essentially, if that's what you use, you just have to uh. Uh put the burden on the applicant to, to show uh Javier that uh. Uh the whatever he's putting there meets the. ANSI nineteen ninety nine, one ninety-nine point five code requirements.
And you know, that's a manufacturer's.
Yeah.
It's just like, it's a good range.
Right, but it's still, it's, it's, they have a, they do, they do charge you seventy-eight bucks for the, for the specs. So I'm sure it's about this thick and. This, that, they are.
But that.
But at least it's a standard and you can distinguish them from uh. Uh your, your run-of-the-mill RV, whatever that is.
I think it's kind of a little tay and hangs off to the pillow in the back.
That's it, that's it. So, so that's, that's one thing.
So that's your recommendation to go with that, with what council are paying this stuff?
I think that'll work, assuming that that um. You could believe what's on the internet and half the time you usually can and but it seems, I mean, basically it's a standard and Javier was telling me today that uh. Savannah County Building Inspector knew about it.
He knew about it and he gave me some details that I can report later uh from discussion about it, so he's.
And we'll talk about that later on, I guess that's part of the work session. So. That's the big thing I want to talk about.
Okay, and now Javier, you can put your town administrator head on.
Okay, so we had two council members who attended currently today. The first item is, we had a V dot meeting on thirty first of last month. Um I would say, I think it was productive, it was engineers, uh planners. Um we had, Greg was also there, our police chief, and then two council members in the corner over there. Um one of the largest takeaways that we discussed was uh continued collaboration. With the town of, or with uh the town of Scottsville with Albemarle. Um there was a reasonable breakdown of how uh V dot grants and then how maintenance works holistically. So we left with some action items, uh one of the most important one was starting with the idea of starting to set up a quarterly meeting. Between the town and V dot and kind of building that rapport and see if we can start addressing those issues that I've heard. Persistently brought up by council or by uh the public, Scottsville. Um beyond that, uh gave also an opportunity for Lincoln and I for the con plant. To get a gauge of what uh supplemental assistance we can get from V dot. And then a little bit more information that we can probably start working into our uh comprehensive plan down the road. Uh just do either councils or the chief wanna add anything? For the first meeting?
Yeah, Javier, uh. Other than new topics, P R E. You know. What I'm, what I'm getting to say. You have to go with what we're talking about now. So, sorry, I don't wanna repeat myself, so shit away this year.
Go right ahead.
Yeah.
The uh. The, the folks who came to V dot were really good, uh a lot of information, uh they basically told us what he. The, the duties were, and told us how they helped Scottsville. However, biggest takeaway probably of things. Uh is. No. We can. We can make suggestions and and. And find projects for V dot, but it's all goes throughout more than. I mean, they make the decisions, you know. That affects Scottsville. Now, V dot does have certain surface treating schedules, paving schedules. Um. I was riding around town today and. We've got a lot of roads that have not been treated for a long, long time. And they're cracking up and see the special marks from the trucks, right? Outside of the road here, so. Javier and I talked. And I. Reached out to the students about the price. And thought we'd had a good meeting with V dot. But the, the road goes down more candid and dirt. In the back, got scared. Um. I told them we need to turn it off, well. It's not gonna get done without. Um said she won't be there much longer, but we can get the ball rolling. Uh and my suggestion to her, Javier, was for us from tonight. Until September work session. Reach out to everybody, especially the citizens of Scottsville, the dogs, so those. You know, come through town, reach out to everybody, if they see a sign. That's dirty. Needs to be removed. You know, the dog, if they see tracks in the road, if they see a pothole, if they see a tree hanging down, whatever they see. Uh that affects. You know, the infrastructure. Get in touch with Javier, you know, send an email. I've reached out to a lot of people, you know. About the food line, say, by the way, you know, how was your ride in here? If you went down Warren Street, it was a long one, but uh.
Would you be calling, would you be calling in county or?
No.
No?
No, you're gonna do a report.
Yes, yes, I.
Uh this project. Don't call the county. Um what she wants from us and and I passed on Javier, she wants every trouble spot. Within the, the unified discussion within that boundary. A pothole, but she wants red flags, she wants a map. And a description of the problem. Then she will take it to her uh headquarters and.
In a big pack.
Exactly.
Like an inventory with.
I think it's just a one big shot to get something done around here.
And.
Yeah.
One thing I wanna say with staff time, I'm very stretched thin. I was thinking if we could find somebody who could dedicate some time to work with me for that inventory, that would probably be the best way to. Get it done by the September meeting with that timetable. I could suggest somebody from government services or somebody that comes to my, or a council member could sit down.
Yeah, I don't mind.
Okay. Let me.
I'll, I'll send you off uh things that we've come up with.
So let me email you both. I'm GIS, I can do it quickly. Okay, so I'll work with these three and put it together, that should come off.
Yeah, Jerry, it already took a fall, you know, two weeks ago and. Got his. But. So that's, that's very important.
It's a good chance.
Well, I think this is our, our big time and you gotta ask. For more of them to get what you need.
Eddie, are you talking about big improvements, little improvements, medium-sized improvements, or the kitchen sink?
Uh everything.
All the improved.
All the above. Everything. And everything from repairs to. The damaged culverts, all in order, everything, anything you see that, that was affected, the highway.
Yeah.
And let's put it together and then just do it.
Since everybody carries a camera in their pockets, take a picture of it.
So um so we're gonna document it and send it to Meredith as the point person?
Yeah. I'm.
I think Meredith.
No, still we're getting mixed up, let's go with one, one.
I'll be the point person and then if I can delegate to, I have already three people who might help me with the staff hours. That feels like a workable thing.
Okay, so send it to you.
Yeah.
Everybody, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to have, you know, next work session, September, um. To about the price.
Second Monday.
I'm sure she's ready for that. And get her presentation on it, for you to pull it all up and page it forward, et cetera.
So I think the most productive use of our time for the meeting is I'll send an email and then we'll work, we'll talk about how to work on it.
Yeah.
Through email.
And we can put it on the agenda.
And I'm, you know, get the street sweep of the Scottsville if I have to. I have cleaned hundreds of miles of road. Hundreds.
But don't forget, V dot said that they do grant one. Each year, and we might be able to, you know, leverage them, be able to get it down here potentially.
Well, Albemarle County rented one that they were thinking about buying. For the fact they bought one, you know, that's probably like. But they rented one for two months, then it come to Scottsville. Um it was dedicated to the urban ring. Um. So I called the county and called the municipal county administrator. And I said, you know, we'd like to try that thing out down in Scottsville, we've got bigger streets. He said, um. A grid that's dedicated to the urban ring. Um. Well, you don't wanna hear what I said. But basically it was. Citizen Scottsville, a tower hearing around your urban ring. And money is just a green mill creek, it's a coming to Scottsville. You know, so I'm, you know, that's one of my projects.
It's not.
They rented one for two months and it cost twenty-three thousand dollars. They got up a hundred tons of uh debris and I'm no mathematician, I come down to eight dollars and fifty cents a can. You remove. The urban rubbish trash. That's not very good. I think. But eh.
Okay, let's uh.
So I just have one question, you know, quick question, Chief, at that meeting, V dot seemed interested in solving some of the public safety issues. That were brought up about the, the dip in the road and the water, the standing water and Molly mentioned the clip there. Did anything follow up? Did they go look at that or?
But I did write all of that down on that, an email with Mr. Payne.
That's the.
So those were the first things that I.
I'm surprised if they seem like. But not like that word or anything.
I forgot about the orange with that section, there's bad. Okay, let's talk about town clerk position.
So we have, we close, so I've been working. So we have, we close, so I've been working. How do I start? I've been working with uh mayor, with Eileen. And with Thomas Armsworth on a selection committee, we closed our. Uh. Candidate pool last week and we have worked. Uh, Eileen was gracious enough to set up a process for us. Uh, so I have a rubric that we have filled out, we'll discuss this week. And then we're shooting for early August, the mid-August, for uh, sorry, Sep-. September uh for uh looking for a hiring pool, so we have a pool of seventeen that we're gonna sparse out. Um, and look at what's qualified candidates, we were discussing today about meeting this week. To have our second meeting, so we'll try to do uh phases and then I've discussed with uh. Uh, staff members, help I need supplementally around. The recruitment process uh to make sure that we get our best candidate for town clerk.
I would like to see, just if I can make things more complicated for everybody on the committee. I would like to see the last several, you know, choices that you guys have, I'd like to, you know, in person, whenever that kind of. Council interview happens.
Okay.
I think that's important to do, the other thing is. Um. Space out on this. Uh, just making sure that council has the final decision on. An offer. So before we make offers, I want. There's gonna be at least an approval of the top three, you know.
Okay.
That makes sense.
What if we provide a shortlist? And.
That was my, that was my understanding, that we're gonna go through the same process that we did for town administration, we're gonna get. We have the full list, we're gonna take that down to long list for final screenings, that'll go down to shortlist of best. You know, candidates. Javier obviously has a big role to play in that and then comes before council for final consideration, is that?
Yeah, cause it's an appointment, that's his point.
And until then, everything is confidential, but just like last time, Alex, it'll all come forward. Once the full process has completed. Now, what you don't wanna do is jeopardize, you know, people have a favorite candidate, you know, you wanna be able to get through the whole process. And then have people weigh in on it once.
Yeah, definitely don't want council to have to do seventeen interviews, I get that, but I wanna make sure that, you know, we're all kind of up to date before an offer is made.
Absolutely.
And uh.
You'll be making the offer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You personally, Alex, you're ready, yeah.
So we're, we're trying to move as fast as we can with it, um but you wanna move at a pace that you do it right. Um, so. If our timing was a little bit different, I would have tried to. As Jim said, it's your decision, so there might be a special session we would wanna do if we wanna be. Uh, quick to it, I think another important aspect is probably when you find the right candidate. Um, make sure to grab them, uh so that might just be a heads up, uh that's what I discussed with our selection committee. Um, for you guys.
Excellent, they come to us, uh, you know, when this was, uh, we had two councilor on there initially and then one dropped out. And comes out, it's a good choice, I think, uh, but I think it. It should have been, I think, for for following our strategic plan, it should have been a little bit more communication, we need more transparency. I think somebody should have said like. Well, we have an opening, we're gonna do the house, is there another kind of counselor who would like to be on, admit maybe others would be used. We have four other people and this is a major decision and and just with her alone, she's hiring a new two, I guess, but. I think the town council really needs to. Be involved with this because this is such a crucial, this is the biggest of how to ministry.
Well, I think Thomas Sunsworth is.
Yeah, I do too.
Good for that, only because he did the job, you know.
I I agree, but you could have more, you don't have to limit it to that. Yeah, and I don't think that's a criticism of Thomas. When you have four other people who seem like they'd be willing to do that and are gonna be more. More impacted by this decision than than people like that.
With the timing, it felt like the best option to move quickly, um I think. The quicker we can get a town clerk in there.
Yes.
Is very important for just us being able to run.
Sure.
This town.
Right.
Um. Are you looking for a little bit more input earlier on, Bill?
Well, I I I don't know if I have, but I think councilors, if somebody else wanted to be, but I do think that town council, you know, should be very invested in this.
So we didn't have that for the uh.
We had two councilors.
It's me, Lauren Lucy, and Scott Sree.
Oh, really?
You did two rounds, so I'll switch.
And then everything came before council before a final decision was made, we put all the full resume. But the long list, the short list, and the rash closing for why each candidate was good and. And all the counselors got an opportunity to review that day to answer, well, maybe I wanna talk to this person. But the council seems generally agree with the assessment at the time.
We could do something like that, Alex, a shortlist that seems like a good. Small pool that we could try to pull from somebody. And I would, and I will stress, it is your appointment, so.
Yeah.
It's.
Yeah.
Just trying to get it over the plate for you guys as quickly as possible.
Yeah, hikers.
Hikers, um, so I think we previously talked, maybe it was the last work session, if anybody has a good memory. Uh, we have the. They call them Scottville hikers, because the horseshoe bend hikers. Um, they shared with me a draft MOU, but uh Nancy Gill let me know that she's. Probably gonna try to share something next month. The idea is that it's gonna be a large. Social fruit that will try to enjoy the local trails, not just in Scottsville, but in the surrounding area. And then try to add a uh community service, I want it once a month. Uh, uh, supporting Scottsville with some of the needs we have in and around the parks. So unfortunately, I don't have uh something right now that's a draft that I think would be appropriate to share. But we could uh try for next month during work session.
So memorandum of under.
MOU, yeah.
What does it look like? What is it? Have to do with the town, how are we involved, what is the, you know?
Uh, Bill asked the same question. It would be, it would be you guys, I would have to bring it to you. That memorandum, so.
You haven't got it before you, so we're talking about something.
Okay, so I just wanted to broad, I wanted to broad. I understand, because I've never dealt with anything like that before.
Well, yeah, I was telling Bill, I sent you on email, probably Bill sent you an email late four o'clock.
Yeah.
But you really deal, oh, an MOU is is. Is a written agreement, which is, it can be binding on the parties, but usually it's non-binary. But you, it's not been called an MOU. Except with the the agreement that you have with the county, which is much more formal. But you do it all the time, and one of the interesting things about the town is that you have all these citizens that come forward and say. Hey, I wanna do this, or I wanna do that, or I wanna do the other. And 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 lots of times, the county council says that's a great idea and then we'll help you, and so they they have a little writing and. Sometimes you make sure everybody, you got some insurance from the group that's sponsoring whatever they're doing and. And then you go on, go on, on your way and uh. Um, and I I was trying to think of some ideas, I think the Batow Festival is an example and uh. I know you've had a bunch of 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 community events that are like that, it just appear, some have lasted longer than others, the uh. Harry Potter uh thing comes to mind, then you have more formal agreements with a whole bunch of different uh and sundry. Community groups that you've entered into from time to time. Uh, so some are really leases and some are uh much more informal, just based on uh understanding. Some are one event shows and some are with ongoing duration. So.
So basically just. Just set the expectations about what we're ready to raise to do and what they're not going to do. So that it's very specific and everybody understands. Because unless you put it down in writing, right, everybody has a different expectations about what that. Group might do or might not do, so this is a way to actually put it in writing. Just make it common so that everybody has an understanding and um. And agree on that going forward.
And there's a great model that's in place for many, many years on the Appalachian Trail, the Appalachian Trail Club. For many, many years, has been a a volunteer to maintain uh the Appalachian Trail, which is. H A R D work and uh, but they've done a great job and I'm sure there's. They have, I I'm sure they have much more than a memorandum of understanding, but that's basically a format, which kind of sounds like what this would be.
I pulled one off the internet as the base and then Nancy did a good job of cutting it down and simplifying it. The group hasn't um reviewed it yet, and so in between now and September, I'm assuming it won't state, but we'll review it and take it back.
The easy thing is to get the memorandum of understanding that council will like. The hard thing is getting all those people to show up and work hard year after year to uh. Um, to support the the trail system and the parks and so forth in the town.
Yeah, but there are models that are out there for this type of.
And I'd like to see it uh. Get to a point where we we certainly recommended a park committee and maybe they can be part of that parks committee and we can. You know, to coordinate that with the town because uh. I think that the town needs to be involved with the parks, and I guess it's just a Van Leeve park, my favorite start, but. But I think it's, that'd be great to get a parks committee going and and uh have me regularly, have some some permanence and some accountability and uh. You know, if that. You know, if they just span or they only operate a couple times a year, you know, we could, uh, we still have something going.
And you know, I I did draft something for parks committee, and you know, I did share it with the team and. I think Nancy had a really good point about let's start small. And go with the group first, and then potentially build up to a more formal committee as we see. How many people are engaged and things like that, so I have that.
Yeah.
Still sort of on the back burner, and we'll see, you know, how this progresses.
Yeah.
It's hard to get people to go out and cut pores in Javier on the weekend.
Yeah. Well.
Okay.
We see maybe both ways it looks like. If you would wanna look into that further. Yeah, I mean, this isn't coming. This isn't coming before us. Until next week, till we have a little time to digest that, but I would like to see the parks committee, I know you've been. On that for a while. Well, I think it's. I also don't wanna speak for Nancy and I don't wanna speak for her group of people, if they're not interested in something like that, I'm not sure, but.
You wanna?
Sure.
Yeah, so basically. The nuts and I started this group. Oh, we could go those asset, we have seventy-four people. So what we wanna do is go through Van Leeve and actually do an inventory of all the trails. And issues. For instance, I walked the Willie Goat or the Overlook today. Nobody should mind.
I agree, that's why we didn't want the kiosk.
No, so what I'm saying is safety, we'll go to safety first.
Right.
And. We don't see how many people actually show up to work, but Bill, you had work, now you're finding free.
Oh, yes.
And that was a lot of hard work, and that's what needs to happen here, so I mean, that idea is.
I agree, well, you know, I I go to the trail once or twice a week and I know it really well and, you know, I actually. Kind of created a. A Billy Goat or not, things done a little bit, but I know it's 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 terribly not, it's for an advanced hiker, you know, because somebody's fallen on it. But and and we, and Dan was really about the 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 uh way back with volunteers and we had these volunteers too. We got a nice uh round. Round reservoir. Uh, that needs work too, did you do that one?
And the last one.
Yeah, that's that's one here, you're gonna, you have a, but there's, there are. Just to, just to know, I, there's, there's three trees that are down, so somebody knows how to. Does know how to use a chainsaw for those trees to get them off the trail, and you saw us on today.
And now we want the MOU to be very basic to, again. Set expectations, to have the roots in place, so that we all go in the mountains.
Okay, yeah, but that's great, we do, we do need that.
And also just now, because I know it's on the agenda, I'm gonna look at it here. There's a whole another game that next month wants to do. A work day.
Yeah. Okay.
Is.
Good, yeah.
Okay. Let's uh get into the. Primary issue that we need to talk about tonight, and that's special use permit, so. Wanna bring us up to speed there, Mr. Town Administrator?
Okay. Um, so maybe we play some catch-up from last month. Um, so we all feel like we're in the same spot, so we had a public hearing last month on um. On an SCP for tourist lodging on Pax Map thirty-six A three thirty. So that is uh one ninety popular street. Um, that resides within Fluvanacant, within the town of Scottsville, on the Fluvanac County side. Of the town, um, the most important thing uh. That came out of that meeting was that we wanted to have another discussion here at the work session. About some details that have come up, that it shared during this town's council meeting and also uh through email. Um, I think we came to a relatively productive uh email chain, which isn't always true. Uh, with Eddie providing a distinction about uh language around. How do we put it, uh park model. Uh recreational vehicle, so between, so I spent this weekend. And a few weeks ago, when I talked with Kevin, uh looking up some of the details about park model RV standards. Um, we already touched upon it, I think the most important thing is to think of this, let me take a step back. Um. We're thinking about structures, so we have zoning questions, we have fire safety questions, we have water and store questions. So uh, what we, what I did was approach it from some angles of. Questions we have with partners in other organizations and then some questions we have about zoning. So assuming it as a. Uh, as a park model RV, um, I can report back that I spoke with uh. Few weeks ago, I spoke with the Alamo County Service Authority, those RVs have hookups for water and soil. Uh, remember that lot had a burnt down, uh. Was it a burnt down?
Uh, I know.
I thought there was a house there. Okay, so um, help me out.
That's different.
Anyways. Either way, speaking to the engineer, um, the most important thing he assured me is that there's hookups, so they will. There's hookups down by the uh road, so they could service that property up to three units. With water and soil. Um, they will, it, there are RVs, so he gave me his word that he will approach them. With the same standards he does a home with the hookups and all the requirements, um, but it. Fits a gray zone for the Alamo County Service Authority, um, since it's, they don't really handle a lot of park models. Um, they're usually thinking of homes or commercial businesses. Um, beyond that, I also reapply at Fluvanac County. And they recommended approaching it as something similar to a uh campground or um. Or an RV spot uh when approaching it, it's not considered a building for them, so they won't. So they won't be doing the same way we would have on a new building, fire inspections. Um, but they will be doing electrical inspections on the property. So uh, going off of the standards as as Jim said, of the uh. Of the park model and what was the? Um, A one one nine five, that would be how we would address some fire code concerns. Um, I got a recommendation from Fluvanac also that uh we have some. Some reasonable conditions we could provide with this, with using our zoning. Um, maybe just enough setback in between them, so. God forbid, one catches, you don't have another. Um, beyond that, uh, what I wanted to use, other than feeling more reassured, speaking with Fluvanac's building office. And uh Alamo County Service Authorities and finding, I think, a reasonable definition that won't um. Tire hands as much down the road, considering these model park RVs don't look like, as we've said before. What you think of an RV driving down the road, they look like cabins. Um, I think this might be a productive time, uh I have made some notes about any discussion town council wants to have. Around uh the special use permit, um, I could address some of the uh. Questions we had from last uh month. And see how productive that is, we could jump into discussion now, or I could keep going, uh whatever you guys feel a little bit comfortable with.
Well, it sounds like we have a definition.
Yeah.
Right, so that's there, do we need, you know, other qualifiers on this? Do we, is the anti-standard, remember I said a whole thing of like what's the difference between a park model and a regular RV? Does that need to be in the specification so that it's clear?
I would use the park model, so then we know that we're getting those required, those uh. I would use the park model, so then we know that we're getting those required, those uh code requirements. For park models and that gives a little bit reassurance with questions of fire and safety. I think I have some clear guidance with our partner organizations in regards to. Utilities or services that all go into that property. Um, I took your uh uh list and thought about it, uh. Concerns with noise and R V noise, um, we have an or noise ordinance we could always use. Um, I, there would be no real health inspections, which is it really isn't applicable to this. And then I covered uh Alamo County Service Authority and then Fluvanac's building code and where this fits in within their building code. Um, I think we could discuss uh zoning standards and assistancy about future applications. Uh, separate from this. Uh, in some respect, holistically, might be productive to have that discussion also when we start working. When we keep working with the comprehensive plan. Because our comprehensive plan will follow up with the zoning rewrite.
Right.
Uh, so that your zoning is in line with the comprehensive plan.
So hopefully this S U P would be a one-off until the zoning standards were revised through the comp plan.
I think it's important to remember it's a special use permit.
Right.
So that would be your uh in definition.
Because it would be nice not to have to issue multiple, I mean, it's the first one, right? Uh, from my standpoint, I don't like. I don't think it's good practice to keep issuing S U Ps for this stuff as one-offs. But if it's just sort of a stopgap until we get something in place in the zoning. Uh revisions, then I think that's. Acceptable. I do think we need to make it very clear on the definition and it's not just a. Anti-standard, but that there's other qualifiers where they have regular. Uh appliances, right? They're not um the small toilets that you find, they're like the little. My little camper that we call behind our truck and things like that, so that we're very clear on what the park model looks like.
I think what model definition would. Cover there.
I don't know that the definition covers it fully, other than it does mention the anti-standard. Um, but as these things evolve, Eddie, I just want to make sure. Like now, there's less of a distinction between a manufactured home and a local home, right? That might have been learning and now they're, you know, the. A uh. The guidance is we all continue the same, so we don't know if it's going to go moving forward. The.
If I could. Just present something as a skeleton.
Right.
And we can all. Say no and just, you know, but or we can build off of it and everything that they want. I would say an amended S U P with new terminology in it.
Right.
The approval of one with potential three. Which would have to come back to council.
Hmm.
Um. Can do anymore. I think that would be it's a fair plan. I think that's.
Yeah. Do you all feel that the R V needs to have any input into this?
I think they will.
Yeah.
So I had a discussion with Kevin also clarifying that it it is within our R V. Um, so they will have uh, I would recommend it going through that process. That feels like the most prudent and professional way to go through it.
Everybody else does.
Yeah, sure.
It should be no exception.
Yeah. There was a foundation, is that, is that, that was brought up, is that an issue to have a affirmative foundation?
No foundation, only.
No, but I mean, you could uh. You can anchor them somehow, right?
If you want a foundation, you can require a foundation.
Oh, you can.
See, that's the, that's the beauty of a special use permit. You can do what you want to as long as it's reasonable, whatever that means, in the context.
Alex, I wonder about that. But I do. You worry about the fact that it's up on a hill and and, you know. There was a tornado or something. They seem to gravitate towards those kind of things.
Well, if there's a tornado and you're that's that should be, you're in big trouble anyhow. Whether it's a foundation or not, it's not going to solve the problem, right?
To follow up with Council Basset's proposed idea, I. I would like to add a little meat on the bone, so to speak.
We do.
Well, my meat on the bone is. Just a reminder that I've been favorable to the process. We were just trying to find a definition. That's all we were trying to do. We found a definition. We can move forward. And it's so, it's it's just as long as we all agree with it, it's. A chance for us to give a new business opportunity a chance. And it also allows us to have a consistent understanding of what the heck it is, so to speak, because it was a little tricky to figure out what that is. And thank you, Councilor Payne, for finding that and and also our town attorney.
Well, I was, it was casting this, it was Mr. Payne.
Yeah.
And then I'll eat who vouch that uh, yeah, it seems to, seems to really be out there and you don't have, well. I mean, you do need to get the set, pay to fork up the seventy eight bucks when you approve it and get the books of the. Tony A is not completely blind when. Ways, he can have something to wave around when he says, where is it certified? But uh.
Yeah.
We know who we're dealing with. We're dealing with Kevin Quick. We all know it. He's known the community. Uh, I don't believe in overregulation. Uh, this. Park model is a different animal. It's a relative new industry, but um. There, there are. Our communities, but it's nothing but these. You see, uh, and the new proposed Alamo slash Fluvanac. Campground, I suspect you're gonna see a lot of them. That's a, probably will be rolling in there.
Hmm.
Um. And and Kevin did show us uh the buildings that he wants to purchase. Uh, that he changed his mind and they they look fairly attractive and they do meet the standards. Um, I don't see any use in dragging that beat along.
The only thing I would say, and you know, when you do an S U P, right, it does travel with. The land, so Kevin may not always own that, but then we have to make sure that whoever was after Kevin. Understands what that means.
You've got a five-year limitation on this.
Okay.
That's a tall tourist lodging, right?
That's right.
Okay.
And then um. I think this will probably become a s- uh. A habit of me down the road. I think some language that Becky suggested to me about just. Uh, complying with town, county, state and federal regulations would work. Um, I had discussions with county regulations and it feels reasonable. Uh, they feel like they're trying to make this work. And it feels, I feel reassured talking to those two. Uh, government entities, I guess, would capture them all. So I would suggest that as your zoning administrator to to allow me a little bit. Um, in general, that would probably be a good standard for this S U P. Um, beyond that, uh, we have those conditions that. Uh, as Alex mentioned, that uh. Fall in line with the recommendation for planning commission.
The only thing I would caution is you mentioned Fluvanac County mentioning it as a campground or something like that. State has very specific regulations about campgrounds, so I would hesitate.
They, they are. They're treating it, they said approach it with the mentality of that, but don't the regulate regulatory. I got a little bit more candid than I should about a conversation.
Okay.
So, um. A R V looks at it at their September meeting, they uh. We tie up any loose ends at our September work session and we vote on those things in September. Can we do that?
Are we voting September? Are we voting next session?
We have to have the A R Vs input first.
Oh, we have to have.
I try to, if you can advertise soon enough, we can try to set up a forum with Aaron, myself and some other A R V people to get it moved through faster if you guys would like to do that.
Yeah.
Well, I can't speak for, I'm not the chair, so. I'll speak to Aaron, but if you guys would like to do that, I can ask her about it.
Do you sometime with for next Monday?
Yes, like.
Yeah, and then you can uh call on you on on Monday to give a report of A R V and then we'll. Vote.
Alright.
With these provisions, they're already, they are already required to handle a type of hearing, you know. Again.
Do we need to hear anything from you guys?
The A R V has to. Well, I guess we don't.
We had a public hearing.
If we make provisions, that changes.
Well, no, you referred it to this upcoming council meeting.
Yeah.
Well, Javier and I went through that, so.
So you continued it to this next council meeting.
What you need to do is if you, you need to set a date certain. Which you pretty much did at your last meeting, but next, you need to just set a date certain when you don't decide on the night of the public hearing.
Yeah, I'd like to be bored with the type of public hearings.
Yeah. So I think you're okay.
Hmm. So if you wanna. Be with me sometime, I guess tomorrow.
Yeah.
Because we need to do this as well as the summit to think of it, Aaron.
Yeah. Okay.
Does that sound agreeable to Mr. Quick?
Um. I I think so, but but I mean, I I do want to say something, just just to go back here. Uh, a lot of this, yeah, it's not like this is my fault. I mean, I I just. Have a picture and you know, these these types of things, the answer certifications are actually windows. Actual unit, when it's done, if you want to leave them, uh, you know, I I applaud the fact that you all said, hey, you know. That's, that's figuring exactly what it is, just to make sure that everybody was clear on the sentence page. And and I reached out to the person with the rego in industry, uh, the recreation vehicle industry, you know. Who there and they went through that answer, they said anything to, you know, it would be in their best interest, maybe. The panel best interest, they could include that answer that because that is like safety things, all the things that I think that's ideally. Well, excuse me. I don't want to say, not that I'm not doing anything different, what I'm saying is that is an excellent thing that, you know, you want all that and. I I commend you and I appreciate it, but I was maybe getting ahead of myself. I was just going off of this because I already. Knew and seen it and knew what it was going to be like with all of it, and so I, I would have gone back. Um, I guess not, my only question is about the A R V. Um, so. I mean, all kind of, you know, before you vote on it.
To get a recommendation to council by next meeting. Because if not, we'll have to wait till September when there's an official meeting of A R V.
So we can vote on this next Monday night. So uh and just just out of curiosity, you say this was about four hundred square feet?
Yes, they're four hundred square.
I read the real estate listing, a real estate story is in the uh New York Times. And a four hundred and seventy-five square foot apartment just sold for five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And the girl that bought it put another hundred thousand dollars into it, getting it just like she wanted it.
That's pretty cheap.
Yeah, I know.
You're about to work a man.
I tell you, it's something up there. Okay, well, that sounds like we got that taken care of, right? So, Mr. Heison, the floor is yours.
All right.
I I want to go over these, I give everybody these key questions, but I don't know if we're gonna solve all this tonight, but I I do want to. Come up with some understandings of of taking care of. How to make it, uh, the government services, as you know, have been involved with this and town to to some degree. Over a year about trying to get things done. And trying to uh. Make the town beautiful, but just maintaining. So the the first thing is about, you know, how to communicate with town about maintenance. Concerns and, you know, I think. The public does it through their voices and also through Facebook sometimes from what I understand. So I want to maybe set it up that if there's concerns that they would go, they would. Maybe Javier could keep a list of this. What do you think about that? If there's any concerns that I've left or whatever. That they would go to you, Javier. Does that sound good? Because you're going to be supervised by, you have, right?
Yes.
Cody himself, you know.
Could we have like a, could we have like a a link or something on this new, new uh website where it says uh community concern? And maintenance and you can click down.
It does, there is a, and will, those are the websites, but there is a contact of. And it said, you know, you can, is this a request for information, is it a concern or something like that? You've noted in.
Well, that would be really good optics for the town to do like an email list.
Yeah.
Send a picture of what it is and then have the town send back a picture of completely, you know, it might be a little much of a hassle to do, but it would be. Great for people in the area to know it wasn't addressed, you know. It got cleaned up, lights got changed, month up.
Yeah, that was some feedback.
I mean, the main thing is just look at our town, we have so much public space and we don't, it should be a glass of eye under and not one eye and I'm sure Javier can't. Cover or Cody can pump, everything needs to be done at the town in in one week even. So if people see something, they say, hey, like the other day, hey, there's trash overflowing here, you just, or this needs to be taken care of. And we can just get it to you, so. Okay, so that'll, that'll be uh on the website at home. Um, and then the then the big thing is how to uh assign those and ensure that they're done properly and that. I guess that could, website could be. Used for that too, if some somebody brings it up and then they bring it up again and they says, it's already done, you know. Uh, that's, that's a lot of supervision uh and oversight that you're going to be again in charge of. You know, uh, and that's been a concern over the years. Um. Now Kevin has already gone over what tasks. So maybe you could go over that, but uh. Because he's looked at that substantially, but if uh I I don't, going down to the last one, what to do if substitute or additional works are needed. That's a a concern that it's going to cost some money. So that might be for the town they run, but I don't, why don't, why don't you weigh in on this a little bit, Kevin, that you did.
Well, I mean, I I I mean.
We did a report card last year and walkthroughs and.
We've, we've been working on this for a longer time and one of, one of the concerns is. Is that I I've always had is. You want to sort of shed a head of stuff and one of the things when you talk about standing it as far as the town. But it it is a business in a lot of ways and and we want to. Provide something so that when you have to ask for something, it it it's it's a little bit easier. And and you know, I I try not to say on social media, but. Part of what we learn is some things that nobody comes to meetings, but you have to talk about, we're right on you, we said a lot of that and. And and just in in general, the maintenance has been something that I've struggled with for like the last three or four years. You know, I just feel like as a town. You know, we want to be as pretty and as beautiful as it can be, because that's the first look that everybody has when they come to the area. And it's not necessarily, uh, you know, it's just where they want to live and if they want to live in someplace that's a little bit stinky, cleaner and then. When people are coming into town, you know, that they want to look a certain way and we've gone through the part of. What do you want to do? And town council had said we'd like you to come up with. Sort of a idea and I I sort of created a list and one of the things unfortunately, if we've gone through this, we've had some changes and, you know. We had uh uh Ushalawas was here and then we had. At at Becky, now we have Javier and, you know, it to me, I sort of said it's a little backburn for a little bit and get the bill and then. You know, great, they'll be, you know, pushing them a little bit more because I think it's something that. At a town council, what I've always said is I want it to be. I think it's important. I just want to make sure that you all think it's important and somehow we figure out how to get it done. I know Javier is saying, I'm drinking from a fire hose right now, handling a couple of different jobs. And and I have sort of said, whoa, but I know Bill has been seeing on a lot of it. I'm just wondering from my standpoint. You know, there's a lot of tasks that Bill and Grace have written down here. We've talked about some of these things in the past. I'm just wondering. What we can do to make sure that. If if we can see improvement, if that is what the town wants to receive and I'm partial to improvement. And and I'm partial, partial to anticipating some of that stuff. I, what what we're seeing in social media stuff that I mean. I mean, that building is starting to sign, so it's a progress and and people are frustrated because of like the the meal stacks. You know, I I I can't stress this enough, when you have a business and all you get pounded on with with different costs and and I know it gets passed. And you know, we talked about, I know it gets passed on, but I'm telling you, when you're there in the trenches, doing all the stuff, it's hard when. It 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 gets passed on and and I mean, not when it gets passed on, but when those things. Happen and and we, we are, I you know, I've gone with the tax issue before on the, on the residential side of things. I truly believe that there should be a residential tax that's in place for the people to share the burden, not that we need to have that burden. For everybody, but it's just the same point that they are just somebody else that makes everybody better. The the town residents would would be better, um.
Well.
In regard, and I I don't, I'm just saying, you're where, you know, are we at? Are we at a spot now where Javier feels like they're. Capable of trying to start. Getting in that direction towards getting some of that done or.
Well, let me ask this. You were gonna meet with Cody.
Okay, well, I have an assessment that I wanted to share. I didn't get to meet with Cody yet because I was sick on my team. But I do have some information that I can share with you all, sort of. How, you know, what I saw and whatnot, if you want to go through that, is that timely? Javier, do you have that? You want to bring it up?
Yeah. What, when you said that again?
I just sent it tonight.
Alright.
I mean, I have hard copy, if you want to.
Well, I think we're all in agreement though that that something needs to be done, like to make the town. Ma- maintain and pretty, right?
Yeah.
Especially some of the old timers.
That is, and I've worked on them, but you know, over the years, the the town is just so beautiful place. And uh, I think everybody wants, people I've talked to who've been here a while, saying like, what's happened, what's happened? So I think that we gotta acknowledge the truth.
So I first, I I went through, that's gonna be a hot, I took all of the list, Kevin, that you had, now have some list for um, Cody, there are a whole bunch of lists about maintenance tasks that were in this process. And what I did is I started to like bucketize them. And you'll see here on a Chevron, um, there is basically five buckets of activities that we talk about when we're talking about maintenance. And so I think it's important that we look at the totality of those buckets and we make sure that we're in agreement on what the priorities are. So there's outdoor placemakers, so parks and daily management of public spaces, then picnic tables and all that kind of stuff. There's grounds maintenance, um, you know, making sure the things we did and clipped and whatnot. There's janitorial tasks for um, small office cleaning, painting, um, things like that, maintenance of of the bathrooms and whatnot. Coordination and communication, uh, constant communication between staffs, supervisor, council members. There needs to be a lot more communication there. And there's handy person stuff, so um, helping out with, you know, the kiosks when they need to get built or other maintenance types of tasks like that. So that's a lot of activity for a single person. Um, and so I think we need to talk about what we're really expecting in terms of maintenance when we talk about maintenance. Are we talking about all of this? Are we talking about one of these, two of these? And then we can look at a model. There are some gaps. Right now, we obviously only have one person to fill all of these. Expectations are not clearly understood or communicated. This is the discussion that Javier and I wanted to have with Cody about what those expectations are once, once we get that kind of from this council. I think when you focus on all of them, they all suffer because there's no priority, right? So I think we need to prioritize these and uh, get the appropriate level of staffing, whatever that means, and manage within existing budget on it. On the next slide, you'll notice what the existing budget on the looks like. You've finished about sixty-six thousand dollars um, for a current maintenance person. There's the breakdown for you on what that costed. Um, and then the um, the next slide talks about options and I was thinking that maybe government services could start to look at the different options of different models. Do we need to keep the existing model and have a full-time staff? Should we have some kind of hybrid model where we have a full-time staff plus some contract favor to offload some of the, you know, more specific activities? Uh, seasonal activities potentially, or do we wanna move to an all contracting model? I would like to see some uh, analysis and assessment in there on what the cost breakdown would be and what that would mean in terms of satisfying priorities in these five buckets. And in the meantime, if we can get some priorities and how we wanna manage them, I have offered before to help um, performance managed uh, Cody and have a person to talk with him on what the priorities are and have somebody, you know, constantly go through this so that we can see how this improves moving forward between now and any future model that we might want to consider. So that's the analysis that I did uh, on this. Um, so I don't know if you have any thoughts on priorities. Still a lot though, since you take on all of them.
But I can say from from my standpoint, uh, yeah, what it taught, we talked about in council before was are 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 the direction that was told and you, yeah, the direction was told was the street here. And so Valley Street and East Main Street, those were the streets that we did a minimum. So we, so so what what I, you may not have seen, it was just what you can see. So when you came down from the funeral home and everything there up to the bridge and over and and there there was a plan where it was like, we go this way and you do all that, you come east to east. And then we did the east part and that was all that I was actually, that was my focus. You know, that and then then the parks that you that we went through and and I presented the document data into where Mr. Carr had indicated that for a hundred and seventy-five bucks, he would have, he could take care of the three things that Cody cuts um, um, there per week. So there was some time savings that were in there. So so some of that is done, but some of that comes through, I guess, around going back is what, that was all that I was looking at, everything you could see. The stuff that you couldn't see.
But to be fair, when Fourth of July comes up, Cody was very involved. And I know I was talking to Becky and Becky was saying, please, he's so instrumental to getting the banners up, getting this done and getting that done. So we had, you know, he had a direction on what you can see. And then an event happens and it's drop everything and the tangent for the job. And then something else happens, we paint the office and stuff has to be dropped so that he, and he was very good at what he did, I have to say.
For example.
I think we need to be very clear on our priorities and we need to be consistent because it's not fair to ask somebody to um, to work to a a moving target, if you will. And I think if we can get that expectation and if that's a priorities and manage that better, then we can actually see what progress.
I like the idea of the hybrid. But I'm wondering with the hybrid, if it's part-time, has he been logical, the because re- really right now, what we're calling a maintenance person is a groundskeeper, a janitor, a handyman, you know what I mean? Like, he's doing jobs that normally would be broken down between three or four people.
It sounds like he follows directions really well. This type of work, except for mowing, but um, this is an achievable, the town is an achievable amount of work for one person. With the exception, it is, with the exception of the summertime lawn mowing, you know, that's a lot and you're gonna be distracted from there, so.
Including events, excuse me?
I think so. I mean, or sub out some part-time labor for events, ten ninety-nine, some teenagers and go move. Which I think, that's the point, I think hybrid's the way to go. If you take lawn care or even the big stuff, I'm not talking about planters or anything like that, you can take the big mowing away. This is very, very achievable and I think it comes down to clear action, like clear accountability might be a better word. Where there is a, I'm Cody, I have a question. Javier's busy, is there a council person? Is there a, you know, the clerk when they come? But there needs to be a structure there and expectations. And I think if you wanna deal, like you're saying, hybrid, like you wanna deal with events in a different way where you're hiring some part-time people for, you know, a day or two, I think that's reasonably in the budget to do.
Not that long ago, the town hired out its summer mower.
Summer mower.
How long ago was that, Rod?
Not that long.
Mr. Woody used to cut canal base square.
I think the other thing too is a solely contracted model is not gonna work. Because it is when the pipe bursts at night, or you know, you can go through three or four different plumbing, you know, we're busy, we're busy, we're busy, we will blow. I want a person that's there and available. And if they can't do everything, we can see what are the big chunks that are taking up your time. And like we said before, a lot of the stuff, we can put it out for bid every summer. As you know, as spring's coming up, who's got the best deal, who can do it? And I think you'll finally save a lot of money, take a lot of stress off whoever's doing the maintenance and uh.
Well, if you have the the cost breakdown, if you were to enter to a part-time and focus the activities on certain certain um, expectations in the Chevron base, you know, there's a lot of money that can be recovered from benefits and other things.
Well, my my, I, what I was thinking about with the hybrid, what I just started to say was that, I mean, if we're I I feel like we can maybe not this year, but for next summer, you know, when we're looking at the budget for a hundred and seventy-five or maybe even a lower bid or whatever, I don't know that we should go down to a part-time. I like, I I feel like we need a full, still need a full-time person and contract the law.
Finding a person that wants to do part-time maintenance work without, you know, benefits on it, so. It's gonna, and when you find that person, are they reliable? You know, what are they doing on the other time? It's a job that locks you down. It's a job that keeps you in the area. You gotta be available. I think going to part-time would be definitely cost-saving. But also, this isn't the, do we have any general numbers on what's being contracted out as far as plumbing or like minor, minor jobs that are? Okay, cause that might be.
It's doable. It's you you pull, yeah, we had to go to plumber. Um, you know, we don't wanna get anybody up here, so we have to contract out to get these, you know, uh, when it's like the balance messes up, you contract that out or something.
Mm-hmm, and so I'm wondering what portion of the total maintenance cost that is.
Okay, so what if uh, I like this because it's talking with numbers and that's easier for me to kind of conceptualize. So I could take a year or two and then pull what I see from my books, contracting and then put it into some productive.
And I don't, uh, I don't want any of this to be like blaming or, you know, a witch hunt. I just want to have a good breakdown of what is current. And then, I wouldn't mind if you guys want me to do it or you wanna do it together. It's something I'm pretty close to and I think I'd be a good person to at least sit down and talk to Cody sometime this week. And give an understanding, maybe I can report back to council with that, of what what is his perception, what is?
Yeah, that's why I think it's there, is to get his viewpoint and how he feels about this model and what he's being asked to do. I will say it's always good, whether it's you or me or you and Javier, it doesn't matter. It's always good, you know, performance management contacts that have two people at the table.
Do you wanna, we have a list for tomorrow. Do you wanna just talk tomorrow?
Yeah, I can spend the rest of the morning. And I, this also is on you guys too, I don't wanna. So I said, but I, you know, I think uh, Cody does fine with the cutting breaths. Uh, he likes doing that and he does forget, it's 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 seen as the other things that need to be done and being able to do them. Like the trimming and the weeding, he's he's negating with that. You know, we got a, you know, somebody told me the other, a local citizen said, you know, we got this Monticello, I mean, this Montessori school. And we got weeds all over there. You know, if I was, you know, if I was, the first thing I'd do is like, clear that out. Or if I was them, I'd say like, this need, this main street is terrible. They got hedges growing in the street. So he, he needs to be able to see these things and maybe reports that, you know, you want me to do this, you know, take some ownership of it, some self-direction. Instead of just saying, what do you want me to do today? That's the kind of person we want.
I think that might be a good, you know, permanent or semi-permanent position for somebody on council as well as to go every week or every month, you know? Touching base, touching base. This is what you did. You did a good job here.
Yeah.
This is what we're still lacking on. This is, I mean, now it's summertime, we need to start replanting, we need to do all this stuff and
Yeah.
You know, that's definitely something to train you as well and get you used to.
Cause I I wanna get into the habit, but none of this has felt like a habit recently. Because I I really, it's just a lot and we're.
Well, we can do that. It's just that there should be a point person on it. If you wanna do that, um, that's great, then you have to do it every week.
So I guess I'm gonna. I I would say it's still just painful to clarify. What would you talk about? I sat down with Matt Wallace and Cody and you look through his daily schedule and I followed him one day for four hours sort of videos, taking pictures of what was reported. And in my opinion, just from my experience in the yard care and stuff like that, when I was in when college, that's what I did, eight hours a day. There are efficiencies that can be done. Um, but 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 again, it's just me and things, just me, somebody from a council person that is, you know, I I I just think it would be better, I I I will help. And and just if the things that as a physicianist can be done, I think would lead to tremendous results. Um, and and that's all I'm saying. I don't, it really, yes, I think it's possible because that's what we need.
But it all has to be documented too.
I think that's very important.
That's really super important in terms of our process. So whoever does that has to make sure that they have consistent documentation every week and that we're going through a process and being fair to the individual and what.
This, some formalization like that will pay off when.
Forma for anybody.
But when one of many of us are not here for whatever reason. You wanna kind of leave those structures around that are useful for down the road.
Absolutely.
Uh, we don't wanna keep having to rebuild stuff.
Exactly.
So I think mentioning of that condensing of what we have, if what we have gotten before and putting into something that can be formalized, I guess.
In a standard template, it's not rocket science.
Billy also have an injury on here. Right, yeah. Would you be interested in a, if, you know, we got two or three storage areas for all the equipment that's spread out, it's in stock, that's up the band lead, we run in the farmer's market. And maybe behind this building. I mean, I think it would be good to know exactly what we have.
Well, I mean.
And they don't, he doesn't always lock, I've been up there, he doesn't always lock that building up there. And I know we got a couple of lawn mowers and lots of tools, but it'd be good to have a list of it and and maybe, I don't know, he should do it, but he's really, I'm gonna have that. We'll call those places.
One, one thing Alex, I was just saying.
You will do that as well, me too.
And if I'm not the person for it, it might not be, if I'm not.
I think you have the most knowledge of any of us on council.
Yeah, you know, the weapons and the tools and all that.
I'm, I'm just gonna say that there's, first of all, there's a, there's a, the accountability sense that goes to town staff, town council in terms of the maintenance person. So there's that structure that you all work closely together. The second one is the actual stuff that needs done. I mean, and the stuff, as Eileen has noted, as Mr. Quick has noted, is fairly comprehensive. There's a way you might say that you wanna wait, certain, certain projects are much more important than visible things. We didn't, you didn't mention it, but there's also the safety aspects of some aspect of maintenance. And then the other thing has to do with, you might say, where do we get the most complaints, so to speak, you know, where is the most consistent? So I think the other thing you wanna make sure is, is it's clear, I think one of the problems we've had, if you go back some years, is you might have eight different voices trying to, we wanna make it simple, you know? So a voice comes in, whether it comes from government services, goes to you, comes in, goes to you or our new town clerk in the future. Whatever's simple. And so it's new because this is new, this is a new group, this is new system. So my hat's off to you on terms of doing it, cause usually for something to happen, it takes one of us at this table to kind of step in and do that. So thank you for, for doing that. And so we expect it's finished by next week.
Expect the bill. I don't think too, I've heard some of the, the use of the truck too, so you know, you know, I think we need to kind of monitor that, that he's using it for personal use and uh, that kind of thing.
Well, I think that's something to consider too. I mean, that's hard work, you know, it's a not huge salary. Is it something we want to be, let him be able to do under limitations as using as a, as a commuting vehicle? I don't know. I I have no idea what everyone thinks about that or liability wise.
You know, I think if he's gonna be expected to be on call twenty-four hours a day, it would not hurt to have the company cars home with him.
I was gonna go with something Counselor Moore said before, which basically is, at least tell me if I'm saying this correctly. I think in terms of Cody, we should have things as they are. But whatever you wanna shift into and you know, and over time, you might say, hey, truck, no truck or this or that or, but you know, we're not taking his keys away tomorrow, so to speak. So we, we start with it as it is.
You know, we're not taking his keys away tomorrow, so to speak, so we, we start with it as it is. We let you have the role that you play, you're getting input from government services, you're talking to Javier. We're implementing a new regiment in terms of what we do. It's not gonna be perfect as we do it, but as we figure that out. You're gonna come to us again, you're gonna come to us again, Bill, we're gonna, we're gonna keep dialoguing about this, and again, I think it's really key. That you have those eyes and those opportunities to talk to him together, so that we can. Cuz it's, it's no secret, it's been an issue for a while.
And I think that, at least what my expectations would be is over the next couple of months. Would be me coming to council with kind of a, first would be a general report of what the situation is, if we get an inventory going. And what is our lifespan on some things? Are we gonna have any big expenses coming up also? To get back from you guys and any other people I wanna add on this, what are the real expectations? What are the priorities? Is it town hall? Is it the fields? Is it the parks? Is it the planters? Is it the street, you know, to get feedback from.
Yeah.
That I can give to him, and then Javier can give to him as well.
That gives, I think that's a movement towards clarity and direction, and then most important thing is, we try to keep that up. As I said, down the road, you know, whoever's sitting in any of these seats. Uh, I think a level of kind of professionalism will do us some good here. I think there have been attempts here and there, uh, to do various things like that. I think another thing that has been. I think is very important, I always think of our. I always think of us through the budget. It's happens or it doesn't happen through the budget. So having an inventory and having a realistic view of that, and what are your priorities and maybe some. Figures into what contracting looks like down the road, that will be a more fruitful budget talk. And, oh geez, it's already six months from now.
Yeah.
Um, but that's maybe a third order step from what we're talking about here, not even like a second order. Um, but I think Eileen gave us some useful information on that and, uh. Uh, Alex brought up a decent, let's just look at what our history of contracting is. Uh, Mike, I've gotten comment before that summer help would be very useful. For the expectations, uh, that is a word I've gotten before, I would tend to agree between holidays and how fast. Uh, things grow and then what requirements we have, uh, being a B city, um. But there's different ways to approach this, as you gave us three models and then with the different models, there are different approaches.
Mm-hmm.
So maybe something that feels a little bit. I think you gave me a good approach to collaborate together, and I think that'll make it easier to have those discussions about what. What our maintenance department looks like. Yeah, and, um, I would appreciate some with that, uh.
Absolutely.
Can I, can I just add one thing that I see coming down the road?
Mm-hmm.
And that is the levy stuff.
Mm-hmm.
As we go for the fire department, it's losing their volunteer base. There is. Put it coming down to the rescue squad building that is going to be fire-related. This is something that is coming forward and for so long, they provided that. Helped with Tim Carr reaching out to the folks and then volunteering to do that. I I just wanna make sure we stress, I stressed it enough that. Scottsville can't fill up as well if that levy system is not managed properly, and I'm not sure from. As as you go forward or what we go for, I just wanna know that somebody's telling.
It's that well. Yeah, we're very close to losing.
That's, that's, that's a, this is, maintenance is nice, but that that's essential, and that's a different level of.
Yeah.
How many hours does the volunteer fire department put into that maintenance of the levy pumps and all that? The checking of it?
I don't know, Caterpillar comes down and checks, you know, the, uh, engines.
Well, be, uh. So what Kevin is saying, I have heard from a very reliable source that our volunteer fire department has about two more months. They're, they're, the, um, sixteen, the, the, uh. EMTs is gonna be a fire department, also Alvaro's coming in with professional. Fire department, and I'm not even sure what it is that Tim Carr does with the levies. But but if that, if that goes away, is that some, you know, is it something that gets done for like? Two hours once a month, or is this something that they go out and do every night? Like, is this something that we might even consider? Hiring somebody.
Inspects it every two years, inspects the living.
Uh-huh.
He's the levy master, you should get him in here and ask him what he does.
And so.
You know, that's pretty simple to address and then, that's pretty important to.
Yeah.
This feels like a different agenda item. There is some overlap. I talked to Tim about it. But it might be productive for me to have a second conversation, because to the points that you were, I've already discussed, I don't, didn't, that's new news, thank you. Um. But those hit points of specific things around levy maintenance, cutting grass.
The, the part that, I'm not, I wanna make it clear, it's not just the levy maintenance. It's the volunteer of a twenty-four hour coverage, so they have to be there when they start that pump, they cannot leave. Which comes down to like the bathroom is being closed and they have no place to go to the bathroom, they couldn't go to the bathroom. You know, at at now based in the host closed out, I mean, I I guess what I'm saying is there's an opportunity that if, if. They, it it shuts down the fire department. With enough lead time, there you could potentially get like a volunteer that might be willing to. You know, if the fire department starts going, not saying this to help, but I'm saying that you'd have an opportunity that maybe some of the folks that. Aren't still involved with that, if the town was forward thinking in that, they might be able to continue to get there aging. But you you would have them for another five, ten years potentially, and I think that's crucial to be able to.
Used to have a number of civilians on the pump, and I mean, I was on the pump house thing, I've run the pump, yeah.
County is gonna take over. The fire department. About four days ago, the. And this is not from official sources, but one of the firefighters from Alamo told me that. Um, with the transition, Scottsville volunteers or. Fire department will end up going to the core accidents, structural fires, uh, ECC is gonna dispatch. The, uh, Alamo county firefighters from Taker, I have a rest for building, as they made of plans, so. Um, the the duties of the fire department to go, because, but my question is, they're taking over the. Duties of Scottsville Volunteer Fire. And the levy is one of the duties, why can't they do?
Well, that was Raymond Flanders, uh, tweeted him back when that was never, it was.
We're kind of.
Yeah, this is a whole nother topic, so let's save that, let's get through the rest of this agenda.
Could we just add it to next month?
Yeah.
I think there's some, uh, stuff I can report back and then work on it out of session.
Okay, I'm, I asked town administrator to go through the new topics, I think we've covered a few of them already.
Um, so we have been, I mean, I and Amelie have been working. Uh, with Civic Plus around the, uh, website revision, so we'll have another meeting this Friday. To, uh, hopefully set up a few backend pieces that will lead to the twenty-first being the, um. What you call, uh, the start, uh, the launch. The launch of. All right, perfect, so even better news, um.
Friday, right?
Yeah.
The Fridays that go live on the new website.
Well, great.
So we hope with August, uh, the website going up. We have been communicating with, uh, Civic Plus also to, to follow up with, uh. With Muni Code, um, I'll send another email, we, and their staff member's gonna reach out to them to also get our town code up. At that point, I think we have a good.
We can't put the town code up until the re-qualification.
So.
But you get it ready to go.
Right, they had a date on, uh.
But you still have to advertise, you have to receive it, and then you have to advertise.
So, once we get through those steps, we can also, uh, push forward to, to get the website.
And we just pull it up so everybody knows what it's gonna look like.
Uh, here, let me see if I can switch it out of, that's how it would look on a phone, let me give me a second.
I've heard of that place, it's a nice town.
Yeah, so that's more similar to how it would look on a website, I minimize it.
Um, so you see up at the top where it says government business community visitors, right? Those are called mega. And it's really a person view, so if you're interested in government aspects, you go to the government tab and there's everything that you need there. If you're a business, there's menus under the business tab, community, and I tried to actually put a lot of emphasis on the visitors. To sort of beef up our tourism base and things like that. There's probably things that we can add, um, so I've been. Gathering content, um, a lot of the content. That was on the site was already moved over. There's some older documents and pages that weren't necessary, they have been left off. Um, but you'll see, uh, all the minutes, all the meetings, the links to the videos and things are all up. There under government. Um. On the bottom, so those are the hoos, you know, if you're a community person or resident, you can go to the community section, public, find what you want. On the bottom, the buttons are the whats, documents and forums, services, town businesses, um. Agendas and minutes, those kinds of things. This is a standard template that we customize with the big plus. So those things are sort of as in stone, and then all of the other content is variable within the. So once it goes live, I would encourage you to go through, um, the chat. And see what recommendations you might have on what to add, so for example, under how do I, we have some things right now. Um, how do I make a payment? How do I pay my parking ticket? How do I? Uh, rent the building, all of those kinds of things. There's probably other things that we could think about, that we can put, um, on a second phase. But at least there's content under all of these for the first play, um, space, I may go void a request. Um, if you go under contact at us, if you pick them, the curves are up there, that is the one form right now that's up and available. Um, and you'll see where we have the, uh. The form that says the minute request, I'm putting your name, your email, the type of request. We can add maintenance to the dropdown and then they can free type it in and it goes right to Javier. Okay, so yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Have a, just so. Any aesthetics? Suggestion? I don't have my glasses on, so I may be seeing this wrong. Are we using a picture that is still advertising the DMV?
Yes.
Can we, can we change that picture just?
It can be, uh, I'm not, the content's really frozen until launch, so.
And and that was just a tiny little thing, like the, the overall working of it is.
There was the challenge work trying to just get this thing together and up and door. So you'll see the two bars there for upcoming events and latest news. Amelie's been doing a really good job about going through like stuff so monthly and putting all the events that are going out as well as. All of the town meetings, the planning commission, our meetings and things like that. So all of that is available on the integrated calendar now, it's our calendar, it doesn't go off to Alvaro and inside.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, so I encourage you all to go through it. If you want to have like, there is a section, I think, for government services, if you want to edit that content. Everybody is welcome, they have training on Tuesdays and Thursdays, or A R P, if you wanna be content manager, have your own section. I think it's like two o'clock every Tuesday or Thursday, we have to sign it up, let's not do it till next week. But, um, you can, we can set up, uh, content moderators in a different. Uh, departments, if you will, and then you have full access to your own content and you can add that. Um, there's some things that, of course, the town will do, like put up the planning commission, documents and meetings and things like that, um. These that seemed a little bit concerned of like having to do all that for, um, you know, herself. But that, those types of formal things will be done, but anything else that you have events that are coming up or things like that.
This is just for town council members, right?
Um, it can be for anyone that the town council approves, as long as we have. Uh, it's all logged into the system and it's all traceable, so let's say, for example. Erin is the content moderator on A R P, she's not a town council member. But if the town council approves her as the content moderator for A R P, she can have access to them.
Right, so they could put anything they want up.
They could put anything.
Then you better be very, very careful, because you're legally liable for it.
Okay.
Who's ultimately legal liable for is you guys sitting around here.
Yeah, that's good to know.
Yeah.
So I will pass these out, just so you have, these were the original deficiencies. Um, Bill, I don't think we shared a copy of you, but we've, um, we've managed to plug us to the deficiencies. We're still missing some legal policies, I'm working with Chief Jenkins to put his, um.
Give me another.
Is the police policy, the approved policy up on the website, so he asked me to work with, um, one of his staff to do that, so we'll get some of that up. Um, I would love to see phase two where we register and receive alerts for new events, you know, you get a text or something like that. And I left this off about addressing the needs of all stakeholders, I think that's. Gonna become apparent when we go through release and testing, right? Somebody says, oh, I can't find this and I can't find that, so. I went through the stakeholder list that we did when we did the, um, strategic plan. To make sure that I can find all of the stakeholders and something for everybody in that list. Um, so I think there's at least something in there. I'd be surprised if, you know, it's fully complete at phase one, but I think. The team has done a good job so far, so.
So any issues, like, if you say, I mean, suggestions, thank you, or?
Um, you know, we haven't got that far as to who's gonna be webmaster, really, it should be the new town clerk.
Right.
Who would do that, and so I think we're just gonna have to sort of skate along. If there's something egregious though, absolutely, we can take care of it. But let's, um, just be, uh, circumspect about what we ask for at this point, till town clerk gets some.
Well, I mean, could you say, uh, look through it and see what you think, but so, hold on.
Top, but but still review it and make sure that, you you know, if something is missing, we should add.
I'll look, I, I think it's remarkable, I just think it's gonna be great.
Potential for a lot.
Thank you so much for that, you know, hard work. Item B.
So I shared a little bit about this in my staff report, um. And I'm gonna share a little bit additional more data I have today, so. We brought on a planning fellow to work on our comprehensive plan. Uh, we did that early summer of last year, last fiscal year. Um, and he has been working diligently on comp land work, he has reported to you, he's seen, you've seen the results. Um, I will be frank, that he has been an essential part for getting the progress done on the comprehensive plan. With the workload we've had this summer, uh, he's been able to dedicate his time towards that. Uh, right now, I think from expectations of when we began our comprehensive plan update. Scope has increased a little bit, for example, Ron attended the last meeting, we went from having larger outreach events because. Planning commission saw it as being a priority for a good comprehensive plan. Um, and I've worked, uh, the whole time with Lincoln to, uh, be as efficient as we can. With one staff member doing a. Uh be as efficient as we can with one staff member doing a zoning rewrite. Um I think a, about a few weeks ago, we discussed. Uh wrapping up and budget limitations I have with uh our temporary is the line in our budget. Uh but that's our intern or fellow. Um and with the progress that we have, Lincoln set a timetable from the beginning of a whole year. Uh to turn around a comprehensive plan, which is incredibly ambitious, even for somebody our size. Uh the run-on joke is that your comp plan takes years after those five years, that it would work. Uh just follow the news for any other municipality and how long their comprehensive plan takes. Um I worked with him about a bare-bones schedule as he works into the school year. Uh that would hold us to the end of the year, best laid plans of a uh comprehensive plan update. That was shared with you with the idea of after August ending essentially. Uh we moving to fifteen hour schedule for him, he has been able to do thirty, forty with the demands that we have put on to him. Uh this summer, uh but that has set up us in a good place and has had momentum on a comprehensive plan. That we did not have momentum on for a while. Hmm what I'm coming back to you uh for uh. As council is, um I wanted to discuss. Uh some allowance where we're reaching the end of how much budget we have for Lincoln. An allowance to at bare bones with with uh an important. Distinction that our planning commission as volunteers will have to be involved more with more time. Um put Lincoln as an advisory role to reduce his time, but to also have oversight so we can complete that time. Um what I did was rough numbers last week, and then over the weekend, I double-checked our budget. Um my math is essentially taking staffing savings from not having a town clerk. And trying to pivot that into uh having some remuneration. Uh for Lincoln to wrap up the year with us. Um I worked with him with a schedule of fifteen hours through the pay periods, reduced from what he's done this summer. And then um and then uh giving them direction about, we have to pivot into. Uh planning commission participation, a lot of it is writing now, we did a lot of the front end, and then outreach. Um so I did math on it, this only probably makes sense to me. Um but I'm embarrassed sharing this, this is very presentable, but. Uh I took our, this is our, I took all our paychecks from the beginning of the year, this fiscal year. And our administrative staff, so what I've calculated is that. As of our last pay period, which was Friday, we're at thirteen. Uh three hundred and sixty-six. We should be at this period in our budget, so one twelfth of our budget at thirteen, so we're actually saving four hundred dollars not having a town clerk. We're on target essentially. Uh then this line, I'll show you the first column, uh an estimate for through the summer. And uh so I projected the next two paychecks we would have and how much it would be. Uh I would have about a two thousand four hundred dollar. Uh uh surplus, I guess would be the word. The reason for that is that the next two paychecks, I probably expect to not be able to get a town clerk until. Three paychecks ahead, just with the timing of our recruitment, so I can take that specific budget line of our clerk. And consider that as administrative cost that will not as typically go out when you have a clerk. So essentially, Bill, what's your question?
Well, yeah, I I I know, I still remember that, so we paid, we paid, he was agreed, I I don't know what the original agreement was, for four thousand dollars for him.
Two thousand, we have two thousand on our budget line each side of the, each year.
So we paid him what?
Yeah, so we paid him under two thousand last year. And then we'll pay him two thousand.
Two thousand more, and that's it, and then there's so there's extra after this?
Yes.
So how much extra after this is?
So that would be what I included in the staff report.
Oh, okay, there it is, okay.
Yes.
Two thousand four thirty, so there's.
I'm not gonna.
Two thousand four hundred thirty more dollars for him.
Yes.
So you're redirecting from the town clerk's saving into this effort for planning.
So with our appropriations, we have a, an administrative line, but I was expressed that. Town council wants visibility on changes like this. And what I wanted to do was get an exact figure, a schedule from him, and then see if it's feasible within our current budget. Everything keeping the same, as people joke, a budget is a guessing game, but you want to be good at the guessing game.
So guessing game would be, if we don't do this, we're gonna have twenty-four hundred thirty dollars surplus at the end of the year.
We'd have.
Well, at the end of the next two.
Next two paychecks, we'd have two thousand and surplus.
Okay, I get what you're saying, I'm saying like, this is not, this this isn't going to come out of a surplus that we did not account for yet.
Right, this was staff salaries.
That's correct, that's what, that's what Javier is saying.
Yeah, it's moving in a round.
And you're pretty much ensuring that the comp plan's gonna get done with the captain leader.
Yeah. None of this work would be possible right now without Lincoln, I would not have.
Yeah, when you read this thing, you'll see how much work.
And he's done a great job.
I just have some budgetary budgetary questions as well, so we're coming up on, I'm not comfortable talking about it, that's fine. But we're coming up on that three months where you're looking at a little bump. Has that been accounted for yet? So we have a short little surplus that we, you know, eleven thousand dollars, I think, I wanna make sure that this isn't gonna go. Three thousand dollars, and then we get another chunk.
I thought about that, this is priority to get this done, and I think at that point. I have a discussion with council about what our budget looks like, and it has, I would assume you guys would wanna stay within budget. But I'm saying this is really important, I think.
And what's the timeframe on this, as far as having to get it done?
Uh he has about two paychecks, I think two pay periods, if I'm right, I have to.
Well, I mean, he's actually finishing up the the work, oh, what's the timeframe on that?
Uh end of the year, he gave it.
We have the comp plan, Tom Wells, Virginia, what day is that?
So you're supposed to do it every five years, but as we've mentioned before, um. There hasn't been, what would you use the word for? We haven't been, there hasn't been a lot of uh diligence, diligence from the state on getting it on time.
You consistently gone overtime.
So if we go into January, nobody's gonna.
And that's not all that, and that's not to say it's acceptable, but that's not all that unusual.
Uh we presented a timetable to planning commission and to town council on it. Towards the end, it's really becomes more uh decisions on approval between first planning commission and then town council. So a lot of the front end, it feels like it's more staff work, and then it becomes more of a uh. A process, a governmental decision-making process on your side.
I like, I hope this is the last year we do uh internships for a while, but I don't think we have the money to put out for these kind of things. And maybe we're gonna get something this year, but I I know we had a bunch of interns over the years, or that I don't think. Have they helped out, I guess, but we would know about it. So I I like the, the thing about internships, you know, I I did an internship for U D A and uh. I I was paid by U D A, that's why where I worked, newspaper, and 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 part of the internship is getting your, you know. The benefit of experience, and he's getting a great experience. The concern I have about him too is I I know he's doing a good job, I guess he's doing a good job, but. You, I wouldn't know it, because he hasn't ever been present at our meetings, and he hasn't really communicated with us. Um and I haven't even seen this this thing, but I I I know. I I don't like that, I I'd rather have somebody sitting at a table like everybody else, but but anyway, but I I that's to my concerns. But I I don't wanna get in.
This internship started about what, six years ago?
Oh, I don't know, I'm assuming.
It's about seven years ago.
Seven years ago, I mean, I feel like U D A would be paying us, I'm sorry. Uh and when you take a job and say, I'll do it for this amount of money, you should accept that amount of money. Um and it's not in that budget, we'll rob him, he's paid Paul. I mean, we just, the chief just had six thousand dollars that he didn't know was coming. Man, we'll all have sixty thousand that we don't know was coming. We don't, we don't, we don't have to spend it just because we're saving, but yeah. And the planning commission, this is their baby. So it 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 gets done, but we just don't have the money.
I did the last one, uh and we had no no support, we just did, we had some extra meetings, we did it over and over, and and uh it wasn't any uh, you know. Money put into the, to the planning commission, I think it's, you know, if they, if they can do it, they should take the ownership. But maybe he could get it to a place where they can continue it, or we could extend it and let them do it, but I don't think we should contract this out anymore.
Well, let me, let me offer, offer, offer an alternate perspective.
Of course.
So, so my alternate perspective, first of all, is um. It's very common for governments to have internships, it's super common, we've had a great intern, we've had several great interns. And it's very common for the internships to receive stipends from who they do the work for, not for the other way around. Now, if you have an internship at U V A, they would typically do something too. What I was gonna say on behalf of Lincoln and on behalf of what Javier is saying. We have been shorthanded, you know, so so on the one hand. Because we've had the switch over of Matt leaving, and we have Javier now as the town administrator. We've had this lovely young lady out here who's filled a an important role as an intern now, as a, as a person who's also receiving. Money from the town, and we're glad that you are. We've also have this super high caliber intern, which is, this is unheard of, like that what we have is somebody. Who's there, and I, and I guess I would say as a town, town counselor. But you can, you may like this or not like this, but most of the time over the years, I defer to staff decisions, and then another word to the staff. Like in this case, as our town administrator is basically saying. I can rob Peter to pay Paul a little bit, because we have this super high caliber guy. Who's enabling us to do something, because we don't have the town clerk, and I will also say councillor, but that makes a good point. I mean, ultimately, the money has to work, you know, we we have, we have to make sure the the balance, the the budget balances. But because we're. Short-staffed, because we have this high priority project and a very high caliber person. I really do think it's a good idea to do what you're talking about, because it enables the town to have a high-quality product. The other thing is, even if you look at what a normal planning commission does. We've done it before, but never to this caliber, like this is a much higher level product than we've done before. So at any rate, I hear what y'all are saying, and it's valid to say, let's not break the bank. I think what our town administrator is saying is we're not breaking the bank doing this, so maybe there's some compromise in between where we can give. Lincoln some more money, but not break the bank and make sure that we have this project done, because I think what you're saying is the caliber of it. Is is really something we haven't done before as a town.
It's PhD work, it's, what it'll end up being, six thousand for what Berkeley Group projected, sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, this, I hope we don't get into this five years from now, and we say, let's do this for sixty-five.
I think that's my concern, I think that's the only concern that I have really, so, planning commission and yourself, I think, it's a good idea. You're getting some, you're getting this value in spending money on it. Do we have, is there any way you sit down for next meeting?
Yeah, so that's what I did through my math this weekend.
But now we have your raise coming up, and we have, you know, I wanna see how that affects. Is, I don't know, is there an easy way that you can go, here's what we had planned budget, and here's.
So I could come back with. What I would expect from our timing of hiring of a clerk. And then what our pace scale is set, and also. I would have to know exactly the details of the candidate we pull in, and see if it works, there's some questions. About full-time staffing that dictates which side of the line you land there.
Uh I think, I think Javier, maybe what I would say, if you take collectively with, with the people, if. We wouldn't wanna spend more money, we would wanna do it within. What councillor Basset has also said, and these guys have said over here, that we wanna make sure. However you move the money around, we need to do it within the budget.
Would you?
Come back with something that feels.
Well, this might be an idea, you're, you're gonna hate it, but it's, would it be feasible? For you to handle town business? Or another pay period, missing clerk pay period, you said you had three that you're expecting to have before we hire. If you went to four, or to a third.
Longer, that's.
Because it's a little more comfortable for me, so we're a little, you know, we have that surplus, so even if it's a couple of dollars, you know.
To, to be blunt, it depends on. Um I have to know what the candidate is, to know exactly where I land on. If you do one more, then you will have those just questions about me still running a skeleton, creating the most priority things that I get there. So it's a question, do you want to hold off on some things that are really important for you? Do you want me to reprioritize, uh do you wanna?
That's a question I'd like to hear from you too, would you rather? Suffer a little bit on this end of it, and give the other paycheck in there, and then not have to really deal with the complaint on the back end, with your your efforts, I don't think. What would be more helpful to you? To have, help with the kind of plan of the day-to-day for another two weeks, three weeks? And I don't know, this is an idea that'll work, I just think I'd be more comfortable budget-wise if we put another paycheck in there to kind of widen the gap for that internship.
We could do it, if I wanna have my cake and eat it too.
And I don't, this, this isn't an idea that you like or that will work, I wanna hear that feedback too, but I think it's.
I wanted first get with my selection committee about what my recruitment pool was. And then I'll know how confident I feel about how quickly I can get a clerk in here. Uh part of me says this is more priority than something that we have to discuss in three months, because you you guys said, hey, it's a discussion amongst you guys. About that, so like, this is more, this is what. You're gonna get award-winning work out of this. Maybe you guys don't care, it's the two thousand, but that will set you up, this is twenty years ahead. We're getting it for six thousand, I understand we're being very careful with our fiscal budget, but.
It's high, it's high quality stuff.
Can we pay it later, I'm sorry, later, maybe like a bonus or something, once we see the, what we have in the budget, and also uh to see what product we get. And, you know, that way, it's kind of wrote, and and.
Or maybe you have a look.
Maybe you could do it, uh maybe you could do it, uh you know, free, until we uh.
I'll push back.
Too late.
Can you get me one of those then?
And we're already, my understanding is right, this year, the budget will probably be a catch-up, or or not a catch-up. A deficit year, not as far as we're actually in deficit, but some grants are holding over, some things like. Are gonna look bad on the, on the budget until the next year comes around.
It will, well, the thing is, is that we held off on. Reimburse, like paying out on these grants, and then we'll get in more. So we'll already have to have a appropriation, because all our grants got pushed past this year. So I'm actually more worried about you guys thinking it's too rosy, and then we go back to a year that doesn't have programs. Well, who knows, maybe we decide to have another facilities grant, for example. Well, who knows, maybe we decide to have another facilities grant, for example, four months from now. Um yeah, I we set it up also for specific appropriations through the year and a surplus of eleven thousand. Uh that was our budget also, we left that. But it's at the discretion of town council, I'm just laying it out, I feel pretty confident about. The bank for the fuck you get with this, but if you don't feel comfortable with that, I'm okay with that.
So are we gonna vote on this uh next session?
Yeah. That's at the council's discretion.
That's what I would say.
Okay. I wanna speak one point there in the longer term about internship. I understand the budget is tight, it's always gonna be tight, but there is a vast potential for it. Community of uh. Contributing to the growth of a career of younger people in their earlier. You know, in their early years, I mean, I I think as a Scottsburg community, this is a really good thing for us to do. As a community service people, so I would say that please. As we move into next year, let's let's remember that as we consider the budget, because I think this has a real impact. On these people's.
I wasn't here when this started, did the town council actually. Interview the this guy and were were their interns over the years? So just one person, see, that's the thing, I think it needs to be a group effort, uh if he's picking people. But I think that's making me a conversation, yeah, I take a conversation for another.
I just don't think we should write it off.
Okay, let's move on to item C, which I think we've already talked about.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Item D.
So uh our last, our new board meeting, uh ARB came out with a recommendation that for housekeeping. Uh they suggested if town council would approve Alex as. Or would appoint Alex as uh. Uh council liaison and the fifth member for the ARB. Yes.
So that's something we have to vote on next week too, and we're just bringing it up for discussion now, or?
Is that the idea?
Yes.
For ARB, it's a little tricky right now, because we only have the five members, so if I wasn't a voting member and. The architect doesn't show up all the time and you know, members don't show up all the time, so to have an actual forum, it'd be tricky.
It won't happen unless you're a voting member. It won't happen, it won't be tricky, it won't happen.
Okay, and we've already talked about item E, right?
Well, just just one quick comment. Great, thank you for doing that, I hope you can vote there and thank you for being on the roll.
They seem to not hate me, so.
Can I make your indulgent particular things?
Make me quit.
So um. On the website, I just wanna shout out to Jack Maxwell there, if you go through the website, you'll see. There's a lot on um preparedness about getting the community to prepare um for floods or. Other types of um. Uh scenarios and things, and he did a lot of work to put that all together together for us, so um thank you, Jack, for all your work.
Thank you, Jack.
And I wanted to present to you all um. Jack has a new idea, I had thought to actually create a committee on emergency preparedness, this is something that I find very important. But Jack actually came up with an idea um to, as part of his nonprofit. To dedicate his hours and his work to preparedness for the town, so this includes. Um weather notifications and things like that, that he, you know, sometimes does now, but in a more formal way. So here is a little briefing, this is just FYI. One thing needs to be approved, he does not get to speak on behalf of the town in any way, shape or form. But again, it's a public service uh that he has offered to do for the town, which I can't.
I have asked Jack to speak during the public forum session next week. Okay.
So he's done a lot of training, you can see all on his own, um I think he deserves a lot of credit, this is for your information. And some of the things that he's going to continue to do for the town in helping people stay informed about different emergencies. Making their emergency plans for both businesses and for individuals. Uh building an emergency preparedness kit, what you should keep on hand if you have to evacuate in the uh. In the event of a flood and things like that. A lot of it's drawn off of best practice and public information that is out there at the state level, at the federal level. But I think it's nice to have that information at the town.
Great, thank you, Jack, appreciate it.
And then the last thing I want to, this is really important, that I think we talk about this. At our next workshop, I hope to sort of get into it a little bit this one. But I'm a little concerned about our revenue streams. As I look at the economy and the inflation rate, um there seems to be notice slowing um. I was talking to Chief Jenkins, personal credit card debt just crossed a trillion dollars for the first time in history. I think people are having a harder and harder time making ends meet. I went to the food line recently, um and there were more express. Line checkouts than there were full-service line checkouts. I think that's an indication that people are buying so fewer things. I think we need to keep an eye on this economy, I think we need to look at our revenue sources, because a lot of our revenue sources are consumer. Day, and if that consumer base breaks, then next year we're gonna, or even later in this year, we're gonna have some. So I wanna have a more broad discussion on revenue generation, Kevin mentioned a town tax, I think you need to. Look at some of those numbers and come up with potentially other ideas on how we manage revenue going forward. So I ask that we put those upon the agenda for next year.
All right, that's it, thank you.